I almost feel like I'm in. You know what I mean, like they talk to me, but then I'm looking at a screen. So if you just want to mention that. Facilitating this as well.
You guys look like you planned your outfits tonight. You and Riley.
And Lori, we're kind of all the same color.
All in the plum weird.
I'm very. Wait, I need to mute everybody right now. How do I do that? Thank you.
Right here in just a second. They were making sure we have our. We're still learning with our Zoom.
So I just want to say that I'm a council member, but I'm, we're missing a deputy clerk, so I have to do the Zoom tonight. So if you're speaking and I'm not, I'm looking at the TV or I'm letting people in, just know that I'm listening. I just can't maybe look at you at the same time.
Okay. And I would say please let us know because I know someone had mentioned something that they couldn't hear on last night's meeting back there. When we speak. So if you could let us know if you can't, I think it's important that you hear us.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Thank you for everybody that's coming, that's come tonight, as well as those on Zoom. Couple of comments, the people that are on Zoom, what we're going to do first is we'll have the people that are here at City Hall. Speak at the public forum first, and then we'll, for those that would like to speak on Zoom during the public forum. Then we'll allow you to speak. One by one and hopefully not talk over each other. So we'll try and control that as well. So. With that, we'll do a call to order. Ryan Nijkors.
Jim Richards.
Dana Vertner, Lori Knoback.
Okay, we have an approval for agenda, a motion to accept that.
A motion to accept.
Jim.
Second.
Lori. I don't believe there's any changes, any comments. We have one duplication, but that's fine. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, so it's approved. Our public forum tonight. We have four or five people that are signed up here, so I will announce. Those people that would like to come up and speak first. City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that you limit your time to. Typically, it's three, three minutes, and we'd like to have everybody adhere to that or less would be great, so we can have everybody have the opportunity to speak. Speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that. Anyone, I'll read the names of the slips of people that would like to speak. To address the City Council, do please step up to the podium, state your name and address and, and fill out the form if you haven't already. So the first one here I have is Jan Thronson. Do you mind speaking?
It's okay. Yep.
Time frame. Jan Thronson, I have property at 25 Minnesota Avenue. I'm writing this document to address the entire Orinoco City Council, management, residents and property owners in Orinoco, Minnesota. As public servants, you serve at the Pufflet's Pressure. What has taken place after the Monday, February 22nd, 2020 special meeting held at 6:00 PM is troubling. Document one is the official meeting minutes. Document two is the city statute, authority of a city council member. Document three is the city of Orinoco vacancy council position. The closing date on document three does not follow document one, special meeting agreement passed by the entire council, closing date of March 8th, 2021. Rather, it states March 9th, 2021. What involvement did any council member or members have in that change? What involvement did city staff have in the change and did they advise any council member or members not to make that change? Did any council member or members contact the city's attorney on this issue outside a quorum to ask what would be the repercussions for this action? The residents and property owners need to, the answers to how the date on document one does not match document three. Document four, November 25th, 2020, an email from a former city manager shows how council members or members have violated document two. On two separate occasions. Document five, Minnesota open meeting laws. Document six, application and time dates applied for the people that applied for the position. Document seven is federal prohibited personnel practices and number eight is Minnesota employment laws. I have highlighted document eight, Minnesota employment laws. It states employment laws work alongside federal laws to provide employees and employees with a wide range of protection. Document seven, five USC, 2302. Granting unauthorized preference or advantage to improve or enter the prospects of any particular person for employment. The above document shows unauthorized preference in regards to document six. Applicants and time dates applied for said position. Or the applicants applied after March 8th because of the action taken by a council member or members. Document nine, Facebook post, 224. City Facebook posts the application process. Facebook post mentions interview date, March 15th, 2021, and selection date, March 16th, 2021. And the closing date, March 9th, 2021. There is no documentation to support that the council met for another special meeting. For the date change. This is a direct violation of document three statute. City statute 203, authority of a city council member. Document 10, Facebook post, 39. Council member or members get directly involved again in the application process. The post by one council member involves another council member in the polls. Council member friend after speaking with council members told to put in for the opening. Post on Tuesday, March 9th, are posts in HOAs. And council member accepts application after the close of business on March 9th, 2021. Document 11, council member gets involved begin in the application process. The council members involved in the process in document 10 clearly shows they are totally on board with a violation of document two, city's. Statute 203.2, authority of city council members. All the council members knew what the official meeting documents stated because they approved it on February 23rd, 2021. To continue on this path of total disregard for the legal process should raise what red flags for the residents and property owners of Orinoco. It also brings into, in plain document five, Minnesota open meeting laws. What do they know and when do they know it? In closing, we have a council members directly involved in recruiting on March 9th, 2021, when they learned only one applicant had put in by the close of business on March 8th. 2021 per the February 23rd, 2021 meeting minutes. As council members, the direct involvement in the process. As selecting officials brings document seven into play. This grants unauthorized preference or advantage to improve or enter the prospects of any particular person for employment. Why did these council members not allow the city staff take care of the entire process to ensure a fair and equitable process? This total disregard for statute 203, authority of a city council member, highlights city councils members of both of office, public trust, and requires an independent investigation into this higher issue. I myself am a retired 27 and a half year federal law enforcement officer. What you see before you are facts, not my opinions. And I want to bring that to the council tonight. I, I served under the federal five USC. It was illegal. For a person who was making the selection to get involved in any of the process. Thank you for your time.
Erin Nystrom.
First of all, Erin Nystrom, 955 Cedar Point Lane, southeast Orinoco. Thanks to each of you for your dedication to our community and your time commitment. Thank you all for posting and streaming meetings. It's truly appreciated and I hope streaming will continue beyond the pandemic. It's important that transparency is a part of the process and we as citizens of Orinoco know that the posted date for the deadline was March 9th. We know that, that we also have. The opportunity to submit applications through that deadline and we appreciate that the council has made this decision to open it up. And in your transparency and holding the interviews last night. In your transparency and allowing a public forum tonight, we're grateful. I'm here to voice my support and give my highest recommendation to Lizzie Fuqyun for the city council vacancy. I've had experience personally with two of the three candidates who are here tonight. I'm a rabble rouser myself. I know rabble rouser when I see one. And I understand the value of having someone who is disciplined, thoughtful and curious on the city council and serving this office. Lizzie's curiosity and her commitment to understanding issues. Gaps and opportunities along with her unique experience in marketing, management and communications make her a clear standout. Among the applicants as a councilperson who promises to be effective. I've witnessed firsthand Lizzie's care for our community and her thoughtful engagement in our conversations about how Orinoco can grow. To be an inclusive, thriving community that builds on the foundation about to be put in place with sewer and water project. We have a beautiful opportunity to grow with Rochester, to move forward. And Lizzie understands that and is highly qualified for that work. Without reservation, I recommend, I recommend Lizzie Fuqyun to serve as Orinoco's next city council member. And I will speak to the previous comment as long as I have the time. To disregard any consideration for other candidates simply speaks to fear for the candidate's qualifications. I, as a business owner and a clinician at Mayo Clinic, have been, been involved in hundreds of interviews and I know a standout when I see one. Thank you all.
Mike Nevin, I think it is.
I'm Mike Nevin. I reside at 1135 First Street Northwest. I've resided there, I think, 20, in excess of 25 years, so I'm a longtime resident. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Carl Kraus's candidacy. And I, I did send, I think, an email last Friday to council members. Voicing my support, which I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review. However, you know, before I deliver my remarks regarding Carl. I was in attendance at last evening's applicant's interview. And there's some troubling things that happened regarding some of the mayor's remarks that I feel need to be addressed. And that could have an adverse effect on Carl's candidacy. I'm speaking of the mayor's comments. About Mr. Kraus's removal from the Gold Rush Committee, not naming any dates or circumstances. With the implication that Carl would not be welcome on the committee again. I feel his comments on this matter were completely out of order. And an attempt to disqualify Mr. Kraus from the council seat he's applied for. I also think these remarks came as a complete surprise to Mr. Kraus. And a number of the council members as well as myself. It was a deliberate personal attack on Mr. Kraus's integrity. On the part of the mayor and an attempt to undermine Carl's intent on being named to the council. I'm not certain what kind of reprimand is in order for the mayor, but I felt it was disrespectful and just a real low blow. Mayor, you should be ashamed of yourself for pulling such a stunt. Now, on a more positive note. I've known Carl for almost 40 years. And with Carl, what you see is what you get. He's been a strong proponent for our village and its individuals. Just look at all of his efforts concerning Gold Rush and his past involvement in various city committees. I've always found him to be a man of his word. Of his word and that will stop at nothing but the truth. He possesses the foresight and experience to place our city's best interests in the forefront. He is deeply committed to keeping our town safe and healthy. He possesses a real sense of community. Even his comments last night concerning our friendship relationship with the native Treasure Island community were insightful and a need that needs to be fostered. There are so many kind deeds he's performed, both seen and unseen. He's also a deeply spiritual man who is very involved with his church community too. He also knows the business side and fiscal responsibility of running a city. He'll always be looking out for what's best for our city's fiscal future. Of course, many of you know him from his past time on the council and in his involvement in the community. He's always been there for Orinoco and I think it's time you be there for him. We need his voice heard again. It's in the best interest of our community moving forward. Thanks again for allowing me the time to speak.
Vanessa Hines.
Good evening. My name's Vanessa Hines and I'm an engineer at Witset. I'm here tonight on, regarding the rezoning application that is listed under the, the planning and zoning item. Just wanted to let you know that I'm here as well as the, the applicant, Mr. Austin Lucas. When that item comes to the table, if you have any questions or concerns, you'll have me to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so. You want to unmute the Zoom? Is there any? So is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak at this time? Please do so.
I can, I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, this is Annie Johnson. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, you're okay.
Okay, good. 475 River Park Road, southeast Orinoco, Minnesota. I just wanted to take two seconds to thank the council for your hard work with this, filling this vacancy. This is fairly unprecedented, so you know, you've had to make decisions. Quickly and I feel that they've been made transparently and I'm thankful to each of you for that. I know that per. Some of the statements that were made last night, just at the opening of the interviews. It seems that the council and some of the city employees have received some pretty harsh criticism and. Feedback and critiques, some of which we have heard again tonight, but. Those people will always inconsistently be the loudest in the group. Unfortunately, people who have more complimentary things to say and gratitude to share with you are often. Quieter. So I just wanted to stand, you know, step forward and share gratitude for the work that you're doing and the tough decisions that you're having to make. And I echo earlier sentiments by Ms. Nystrom. Regarding the applicant Lizzie, I was very impressed with as well. So I'd just like to kind of put in my. For what it's worth, my opinions on that. But again, thanks to the council for. For doing what you do and for holding all of our best interests at the forefront.
Great, thank you. Is there another person that would like to speak on Zoom?
They're able to unmute themselves. If, if you'd like to speak, just unmute yourself.
Second call for public forum, if you would like to speak. Please unmute. And third and final call for speaking at public forum from the Zoom links.
We can hear, we can hear fine.
All right, we'll close that public forum at 6:52. All right, thank you. So we will continue with our agenda.
So Riley, can I ask where on our agenda are we gonna? Are we gonna vote in case there's people that wanna? That wanna leave?
The applicants, we fill in E1.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean for the open.
Oh, the council public forum?
Right. Well, to fill the open council.
Right, and that's E1.
It is E1.
Fill the vacant council position.
I must have a different.
Yeah, I have a different one too. I was gonna ask the same question.
Really?
Yep, yep. It says city clerk wage increase.
The council vacancy is number one in front of that.
Yeah, I have very one.
Does yours say that?
Yeah, mine has the fill of vacant.
What is mine?
I don't have one.
You've been there.
This was an earlier one.
I have so much paper here.
There's agendas right there on the table. It's just an agenda.
This was yours agenda?
That's yours, right? And I have two agendas. Hey Lori, just take mine. Okay.
Yeah, mine, I don't, I just.
Okay, yeah?
Yeah, mine's right. Sorry.
No, it was a later agenda than this. All right. From the Sheriff's Department, Mark Chambers, Sergeant.
Good evening, everybody. I am not in fact Sergeant Mark Chambers. He's off today, but he asked me to come. Talk on his behalf, so my name is Brady Wolhart, Sergeant with the Sheriff's Office. And he didn't have anything specific to pass on, but just kind of a, something that we're dealing with all over the county, not just Orinoco, is catalog converter thefts. I'm sure you've seen that in the news recently. My advice. If you have vehicles that are outside that you have a place to store them inside, even though the weather's kind of getting nice though. It would be our recommendation that you park that stuff inside, just as a precautionary step, until we can get. These bad actors rounded up, so. It is a very costly expense if you do get one stolen, so it's just in your best interest to take whatever means you can to prevent yourself from becoming a victim.
What was your last name again, sir?
Wolhart, W O L H A R T. And I'll stick around here for a while if anyone else has any questions.
All right. Thanks. The Department, Dan.
Good evening. Last month, we had three calls. So on, I think it was February 21st, was the Sunday. Right after that last, the last storm, we had, the roads are pretty slick, so we had a car crash on 52. It actually went almost on Lake Shady Avenue on, on the fence, but the car was on its side, but everybody was fine, so. We just kind of observed while the, you know, kind of tech them out. They refused care, so that was good, that it was uneventful. Then that night, we had a fire alarm. A lady had a chirp alarm saying to go out. We investigated, did not find anything. The batteries didn't have any date, so I had no clue how old they were, so. We replaced the batteries and no calls back, so check your batteries because they, they go off. I mean, this was like 11 o'clock at night, which is common. Usually it's like 2:00 in the morning, so changing batteries. And then we had a car crash, I think it was early this month, right around, right in front of Tilly's. Hope people hit each other again. Nobody, nobody really heard. We were canceled before we actually left the fire. So that was the three we had. Unfortunately, we had one of our newer members get a job up north. So Abby Shimick submitted a resignation, so I guess I'm sadly would like to have the city approve her resignation from the fire department.
Make a motion to approve the. Resignation of Abby Shimick.
Shimick.
Any comments? All those in favor, say, probably say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you. And then I talked about the ISO. So ISO interviewed us, so insurance services organization, they do review. Cities and it's, the review is three parts, the dispatch, the fire department and the water system. And so we were way back when, we were, I think we were a class of eight, higher numbers, worse, 10 going down, down. And then when we got our water system, I think it was 11 or 12, we had them come in. I think we got like a 6, 7 rating. And then they told us we probably wouldn't do another review, but I guess now the insurance companies want to see more frequent visits, so last fall, they worked with Dan and myself to do a review. We of course have more hydrants now, we have another fire truck, and so I think we're, last time I didn't know what I didn't know, so I think that was a little better in some way documentation. So, end of February, we got a notice that our ISO update came back and it's improved a little bit. I think it was a 6, 6 slash 4, depending on where you were, so. This is one of those things that, you know, some insurance companies use this rating, some do not. But the ones that do, that will, I guess it's effective. But the ones that do, that will, I guess it's effective June 1st. So potentially down the road, you know, Orinoco homeowners, you know, if their company does use that with the rating going down, that should mean lower insurance rate. So we're trying to do our part to make sure that, you know, we're trying to get the, it's all based on the score system. So things you do, you get points. And if you don't do, we don't get points. So I think we did better. Looking at the results, I think we have probably some things we could do again. They want to do now every five years a review. So that's good. That's something we're trying to do for the homeowners. First responders, you can see we had 10 runs, split 50/50, five in the city, five in the township. And then for EOC, I just wanted to make sure people aware. So this is the time of the year. We had a tornado watch last week. We got stormed today. It's gonna rain later. I mean, very crazy weather. So last Thursday, the lacrosse weather started, the virtual stormwater training. So if you just Google lacrosse weather storm, Skywarn, they're doing all virtual events, about an hour and a half. So if you ever had any interest in the weather, meteorology, what is a scud cloud versus a funnel cloud versus tornado? Well, you can take that free, anybody can take it. So we, as the fire department, we sometimes get called out as storm spotters. So we try to, you know, some of us watch as a refresher. We've got some new members, so I encourage them watching. There's multiple nights. So go ahead and go out there if that's something that interests you. So I think that's all I had.
I've gone to one of the Skywarn training sessions. They're interesting a couple of years ago.
It is. It's not something I would go to every year if you're just a labor person. But if you've never gone to one, it's very interesting to learn about the different type of weather patterns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Next item is our personnel. And the first item is what we interviewed the applicants for last night and to have a discussion now and proceed with an appointment after our discussion. So I think the candidates that we had were insightful in their responses. I, the people that, we had two people that had sent the application in and one was had an error in the timing in the event. So that wasn't, wasn't able, but never did hear from the other gentleman.
So Riley, I'd like to speak before we go into this. So I did, just for the council purpose here and honestly for the city folks. So based on the turnout tonight and the phone calls that I've received over the past week or so, we can tell this is a pretty hot issue as to what happened here with the application process. We all voted as a council on the 22nd that the deadline would be the 8th. I didn't know anything that the ninth was on the application. I got blindsided by people that called me. I called Jerry Lynn to ask what the ninth was about because I had called at the end of the day out of curiosity on the 8th to see how many applicants we had. We had one, and that was Carl. And I look at it this way. We did not give the discretion to any one person to change that without coming back here for a vote. I don't care who it was. It could have been Nancy. It could have been any one of these candidates. I don't care who it was. I don't feel this was right to arbitrarily one person change it. I, Riley, you and I talked about it. I called Riley over the weekend. I told him that this sickens me to know that this is happening. And it's not just one person that's, whose integrity is in jeopardy with this. It's all of us. We all agreed to it. And there was an arbitrary change. And the applicants got caught in the middle as well. You know, I do feel bad for the applicants. But as a council, we agreed and we voted on that, and that was the agreement. So whether this was a legal issue or not, I think it turned into a political issue. I really do. And I think 12 days was enough. And I understand why Riley said, let's push it out a day because things got out a little bit late because of other priorities that had to happen in city hall. But still, it was 12 days. And on the 8th, we had one applicant. And my feeling is if we go with this, we're setting a precedence because we have city water and sewer. It's a huge project coming up. We're setting a precedence that deadlines can be arbitrarily changed by anybody. I was upset enough, I called the League of Minnesota Cities, talked to two counselors. They said this was wrong. They said it's not a legal issue. They said, yes, it is a political issue. And it's an integrity issue and it's a trust issue of not just Riley. It's all of us. I, I'm a new member to the council. I don't want to start out this way. You know, it's integrity and trust is a lot in my book. And the thing I guess I would ask us to all think about is with this city water and sewer project that's coming up, there's a lot of deadlines we're gonna set with bids. Are we going to look at it and say, well, we don't like the bids that are in the box right now? Or we don't like who those people are that are turning the bids in? Let's kick it out another day or two days. Are we gonna do that? I don't think so. I would hope we wouldn't. I wouldn't vote for it. I just, I honestly, I have an issue with it. The one thing that rings through constantly to me is what Pam Whitmore told me from LMC. She said, Jim, and then Jake as well, said, one thing to keep in mind as a council member, a new council member, keep things above board. Be very transparent and stick to your goals. And the main thing to remember is there is no one person, not even the mayor, has more power than another person on the council. The mayor does have power. Riley has more power. He signs and, and there are some other things. But as a rule, they said, no one person on that council has the ability to make these arbitrary changes without coming back through the process. And I just, I have an issue with that. I definitely do. And the other thing, I did explain that I was getting a lot of phone calls. And I welcome the phone calls. We're here to take those phone calls from our residents if they're concerned. But all of a sudden, my phone number and the rest of the council members, other than Riley and Trish, Trish was still on the website, there, our phone numbers disappeared off the website. I know they were there. I asked Jerry Lynn, who has access to do that? There's three people, Riley, Jerry Lynn, and.
Can you stop right there, please?
Yes.
The numbers were, I don't know how they removed off, but nobody took them off deliberately.
Well, they were removed. And I'm not saying that they were deliberately taken off. I'm just saying they were taken off. It doesn't look right. It doesn't, Riley. And I'm not, I'm not pointing the finger. I'm just saying it happened. I didn't feel good about it. In the end, it, you know, anyway. And the other thing that I, that I want to ask is when, when things were posted on the city of Orinoco or citizens of Orinoco Facebook page, Riley, did you approve what Dana had posted in terms of contact her?
Private things. I know there wasn't a city decision that she could do it. No, it was her own.
Okay. And then, so, so Dana, you posted contact you. And I'm wondering, Lori, did you approve to say contact you?
I had, I don't know that Dana and I actually, I know we didn't talk about it. But I have talked with citizens. I have, you know, people have reached out to me and I definitely would welcome any, you know, questions, concerns, questions about being on council. You know, we're looking for applicants. If you have questions, please contact me. So I definitely would, would welcome that.
Okay. And, and I appreciate that you're welcome. But it wasn't, it wasn't pre-approved to put it out there. Because the issue I have with this, Dana, is this is put out there. I was omitted. I'm a council member as well. I was omitted from that.
Boy, capable of putting up your own Facebook account, Jim.
You're not to speak, please?
I understand that.
Yeah.
It's an obvious point.
So that city business on the Facebook page in the, the League of Minnesota Cities, well, Pam, I asked her about that. It's opening the city for a lawsuit. Because if you block anybody on that and you're posting that kind of stuff, and Dana, I know you have access to that because you stated it at the Gold Rush Committee that you changed something, that someone entered. And she said, you've got to be very careful about that. So I would suggest we don't do that here.
Can I interrupt you? I didn't, I don't have access. I gave everything up when I became. I'm not an administrator or moderator. Christine Genado and Laura Quest are.
So how could you change Carol Olson's post? You said.
On Gold Rush, on the Gold Rush Facebook page. They're two totally different things. I don't, you're misconstruing. I, I.
She said citizens page, so.
Who said citizens page?
Carol.
That's incorrect. She meant Gold Rush. I have no, I gave that up before I took my seat in January because I don't want, so what I share is personal and that's to be transparent. And that's to get the word out. That's why I formed that group to begin with is because the city was so restrictive of what they allowed on their Facebook page. You couldn't even ask about a lost dog. And so we decided, the few of us decided to form it to be transparent, to get more involvement. I think, why wouldn't you want?
That's personal. So there's personal in city. And I will tell you, the League of Minnesota Cities suggests that we keep city business off that site. Post those types of things on our city website.
We do.
To keep us out of, out of trouble.
They are. And the citizens page is a private citizen page. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the city of Orinoco.
I share what Geraldine posts. I share the posts.
They are separate things, Jim, because of that. Because the city of Orinoco's page is blocked. There's absolutely no comments. There is nothing allowed from anyone at any point in time other than what the city posts. So that, that's for that specific reason.
Yep, I get that and I appreciate that. But my issue is there's things out there like posting to say, contact me, contact Lori. There's, there's an entire city council to contact.
I'm happy to add your name and number. I don't have your number. I think I do now. I think I had, because it hasn't been on the website. So I had to call Geraldine to get it. That was actually quite a while ago to talk about the chicken stuff. But yeah, I wish you would have just, I mean, I would love to chat with you about this. It's not something we have to do. You could have brought up your concerns at any time to me. It's kind of unfortunate that you waited until tonight. So kind of speaking of blindsiding people.
Well, yeah, I just, I think it's a better practice. And this is what she said. Keep city, city, keep personal, personal.
I think what I'll do is I'll contact them myself and explain, and explain. And I'm happy to invite them to the page and they can see for themselves what it is. Because I, I don't, I think you're, I think you're confused. And I think you probably.
I'm not confused.
And I think you probably.
I'm definitely not confused. Please don't say I'm confused. So anyway, this, and it's nothing against the candidates. So I'll just wrap it up. So with that said, based on we voted for the 8th, I make a motion that we accept the applications that were in on the 8th.
Jim, we did not.
The motion on the floor.
It wasn't a vote. It was discussion. There was no vote.
I make it a motion that we accept the applications that were in on the 8th.
Is there a second? Is there a second for the motion? Signal second for the motion, motion dies.
I would like to make a motion, actually, before we move on. I would like to make a motion that we accept all three candidates that filled out the application form and turned it in at, by end of business day on the 9th, as was stated on the application itself.
Here, hold it. Accept them on what?
Accept all three candidates that filled out the application form where the date was stated that the application needed to be turned in on the 9th.
Is there a second for that?
A second.
Any seconds in? Discussion? Part of the discussion, I read this comment last night. And for those that didn't hear it last night, I would like to read it now. And an opportunity to also to comment on Jim's comments too. February 22nd, 21, 2021 special council meeting, a discussion centered around how the council should proceed with filling the vacant council seat. City attorney shared different options for the council to consider. He indicated there was no Minnesota statute or laws that require a specific, specific process to be used to fill a vacancy. The council could have appointed a person to fill the vacancy. We could also decide to request citizens to apply for the voting via an application and interview session processed by the council. After the discussion, unanimous consensus for the four council members was to proceed with soliciting applicants from the community to submit an application. The application would be generated by city staff to post on the city website and Facebook page. The census was to accept applications from February 23rd through March 8th. There is no motion or vote for this process of soliciting applications. The council was only initiating a process to conduct interviews. Due to the heavy city staff workload on the following day, February 23rd, it was not posted until Wednesday, February 24th at 9:53 a.m. The city staff and I chose to push the arbitrary end date out to March 9th, which was the same number of days that had been posted the day before, February 23rd. There was no intent by the city staff or me to go against the council's process and date setting. We just wanted to maintain the same number of days to receive applications and not short anyone on time. The posting on the city Facebook, city website and applications all said the end date was March 9th to the general public. It was 100% clear to the public regarding the end date were response. If we would have used a March end date, the same people would have submitted their names, in my opinion. But they chose to wait until March 9th, which was the deadline per the information shown to them. Some residents are upset because we did not appoint someone. Instead chose to conduct interviews. It's okay to be upset with the council's decisions, but the rudeness to our city clerk and emails and phone calls to home at night were very disrespectful of privacy and very unfortunate. The council is not corrupt, as many have indicated, phone calls and emails. We chose to be on the council and the will of the people put us here to serve all the residents of Orinoco. In regards to your comments regarding LMC, you're right. This is no legal issue. It's strictly a political decision of how we were going to proceed. I'm sure when you talk to the League of Minnesota Cities, they said to advise and talk to your city attorney. They could not give you an opinion. Which is, that's been my experience with talking to LMC. Talk to your city attorney. On the March 8th, just for your information, we did have two applicants. One was received the evening of March the 8th. That person did not appear last night at our interview session. All of our decisions here, this end date is not a contractual date. All of our decisions here, this end date is not a contractual date. Contractual date is when we get to the contracts you were talking about with, that are binding motions, acceptable of contracts dates, because those are legal, legal motions of end dates and things like that, that's contractual, and those are adhered to and followed by the council. So with that, any other comments?
I, I just have a couple of comments, and this, for, for everyone that's here. I was also taken aback by the, the date changes. And did speak with the city attorney about what had happened. And knowing that every single person that filled that form out had the same March ninth date on it, is the reason that I moved to vote that all applicants are, are, uh, able to participate in this vote. I, I just don't feel like it's, it's our job to exclude those that follow the directions, even though this situation happened, you know, I think there, there could have been more communication, you know, even at the meeting last night, that we could have brought this up last night and, and called for a vote last night to exclude or include the, the applicants prior to this evening's vote. You know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, and I'm guessing right about now Ryland's wishing that he wouldn't have suggested that March ninth deadline. But in all transparency to you, I think, you know, we should include the applicants and move forward with a vote based on the fact that they were all given the same information at the same time.
Any other comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the three applicants that I interviewed last night? For consideration, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Aye.
Motion's approved for the three applicants. Those applicants are just for, Carol Prowse, Wendy Phillips, and Lizzie Fookun. All right. So with that, just hoping for discussion. About the comments from the people and, uh, whoever'd like to go first, or if we can talk about in general. I, uh, you can tell that all three candidates spent time, quality time responding to them. Whether they were typed out or written out. I thought they were all, I think they're all concerned about the welfare of the city and how we grow with our sewer system. We had a range of years of involvement with forty-plus years of Carl, so two person that here has only been a year, so I think that's, and the other person was three years, but I think that it's, uh, it's interesting to see that excitement and willingness to serve, step forward for two years, so. There is a lot of, I, I heard a lot of comments last night about, um, integrity, openness, communication in their careers. Also with the, uh, a couple of them talked about conflict resolution, I think that's important as a council member, to be able to be aware of that. Workforce solutions. Just those are some of my, my key, key takeaways. Listening is another critical item that was talked about, in comments as well. I think, uh, heard some nice quotes from the interviewees of, of their models that they lived to, and I thought that was interesting as well. I do think that, uh, have a broad range of education that the people leave, that brings to the table as well in their interviews too. Any comments? Discussion going?
I'm grateful that we had people in the community apply, I think that's really exciting, we had a total of five, and like we said, the one person missed this date accidentally, so we would have had four here last night, but, um, I'm just, I'm really excited, I think that represents our, our community really well, that we're, people are willing to step in, and I think, especially as it's just shorter term, it's just a really good chance for people to get a taste of, of local government. And be a servant to the people of this community. I really, I'm just so excited about this town, and I could tell that all three applicants last night felt that thing. And I'm grateful for all of them for stepping up to apply.
My comments to the group would be, you know, we've got Carl with years of experience and history with the council. And I, I think it's fantastic that you came forward again after, you know, being, kind of being done after four years, and then coming forward again, and I think that's fantastic. And I think the other two candidates that came forward with zero experience in the city, but a lot of passion, and definitely some, some new things to bring to the table from each different perspective, so. I think, you know, on one end, going with Jim's vote would have been the easy way, because we could have just said, here it is, Carl. It makes it a little more difficult, because I think all three of you bring something unique to the table, and it makes our job harder to, to take that vote on, so. I appreciate all three of you coming forward and just giving us the opportunity.
So just a couple of comments about, the Gold Rush and Carl's involvement with that. And the question that came up, the question is why we had it. And I think that's, it's a fair question. At the same time, we discussed a little bit last night too, the timing of when the question was put together, not knowing who was going to be coming forth with the name, but being involved with the Gold Rush was a, a key part of that commitment to be on the council. And that's written in the bylaws of our Gold Rush. Yeah. At the same time, had we not had that question, and specifically, we're talking about Carl, so, the question came up. He answered the first question, we talked about Gold Rush. About the organizations that he's involved with, and that's fine, he listed Gold Rush. And then we got to the third question about Gold Rush. And comment came out from him because of, it wasn't that, that they, he had not been on Gold Rush for the last three years for that reason of being released from the Gold Rush in twenty-seventeen, so. Had they not been, and if he was the only candidate, and that's fine, if no more of the candidates came forward, I'm hypothesizing here quite a bit, but the point is, it wasn't volunteered either, that he had not been involved with Gold Rush during his three years, or the four years he was council member. So. I, I think that's just a, that's, looking at the other side, I had that question that come up, or, I didn't, I'd said anything as well, I thought we was, to me, that's all being part of transparent. Trying to be transparent about the person. And so I thought that was for the other council members to be aware of that too. And that's the reason I made the comment. So, I, uh, so any other comments about the candidates? Last nice meeting. I think whoever we choose, I would hope that the other participants would be, continue to be involved in the city. Excited, it's nice to see you, but, nice to see you and here, based on the same thing as that as well, so. So I would keep the discussion going. I would, based on my review of the comments, and comments from the people here as well, I would, uh, like to make a motion that we appoint Lizzie Fookun to the council position. Is there a second?
A second.
Yeah.
I think Lizzie brings a lot of, uh, career exposure to working with people. Communications is a key part of that, and I think that's an important part of being a, a council member. Her experience from what she does and how she contacts people and, and, uh, the one thing that caught my mind was just, she was talking about speaking to conferences and, same time, working with trying to revolution or resolve problem issues with groups of people, and to walk away in thirty minutes as having a, something resolved, I guess to me indicates that that is a, that's a talent, that I think bodes well to be a council member. As you know, as a council member, we hit, as a member of a council, are exposed to a lot of different citizens with a lot of different important views. Some that agree with you, some do not, but at the same time, we need to work through those, and I think that would be a nice attribute for Liz to have on our council. She's also interested in the, in the communications, expanding with the city and the sewer. And I think that, and Wendy said the same thing too, all three of us said the same thing. Sewer is very important, and they all recognize that that's a key to our growth of the city. And they're willing us to be part of their growth, so. Other comments?
Yeah, it stood out to me, her experience, you know, as a page in the Minnesota House of Representatives, I thought was very interesting, so it shows that she has an interest in politics and, and then her experience with the many nonprofits, and her leadership on, as board of directors, and, um, I just, I think so often, that when you, when you, when you ask, when you ask anyone, who gets people done, it's people who are busy. And so, that's who gets people done, so I think, you know, this is a, she's, I think somebody who could really benefit our community in a role as councilperson. And it struck me too, that she spoke about, you know, that she has pride in belonging to this city, and she, and that it's important for her to share that with its citizens, and, and, yeah, I think she's going to be amazing, I think she'd be amazing at recruiting businesses, that's what she's really interested in. Recruiting businesses and new citizens, and I think that's where we're headed, obviously, with our water and sewer project, and we all know that for Orinoco to grow, that needed to happen, and we're, we're on that road right now, which is really exciting. So now it's time to start looking past the water and sewer project into the future, and what that looks like. And just with her marketing and data analytics, over all the industries, I think she would just be a huge asset to our town at this point.
I, I would say, I, I agree with everything that both of you have said, um, one thing that really struck me last night that she said was, you know, really thinking forward, you know, twenty years from now, what is twenty forty Orinoco look like, and, and coming up with a plan for that, and I think having someone with this, with her background, it, it puts us at a better position to have that forward thinking, and, um, you know, we're not looking back, we're looking forward, and moving into these next few years, what does that look like? And having someone with experience in the marketing and the data, and the data analytics, and being able to really dig deeper into what people want in our community, and having that resource would be great, so.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Lizzie? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right, that's approved, and Lizzie, I don't know if she's here tonight or not, she indicated, there she is, okay. Lizzie, if you want to- We have, uh, Lizzie, if you'd like to come forward?
Carl, you want to congratulate her?
Yes.
That's so rude. Did you just see that? I mean, that's just obvious as to why.
Sorry.
She's deserving of a congratulations if she walked out.
If you want to come forward, we have a, a seat of office here.
Cool.
That you would, uh, look and sit here. I just want to write your name and sign it.
Let the record show that Carl walked out.
He's a citizen. We don't keep track of citizens.
All right, so-
Congratulations, Lizzie, and I didn't oppose because of who you are, it's the situation.
So, if you'd want to read this?
Yeah. Um, here, there. Yeah, just states everybody.
Okay, great.
This says, "I, Elizabeth Rose Fookun, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of City Council in the County of Olmsted, the State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability."
I don't know, do we have her join in, or how does that work?
She joining the rest of the team?
Does she join the meeting or wait?
Um.
I think she has to wait because she didn't have anything.
So can, is it okay for Lizzie to join council now tonight, or?
She could, she could, but there's no desk, she can have my desk.
That's true. Where's she gonna sit? She can have my desk, because I'm, I'm now the Zoom person.
She could sit in here.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, she's taking the oath of office.
She could sit in here. Yeah, me either.
It's kind of a mess. The full heck up, but just listen and-
Okay.
All right, so the next item?
Thank you.
All right, the next item is over. Lori, that asked to have this put on the agenda, for the clerk wage increase? Is there a general discussion there?
Yeah, you know, I think with all that's happened in the last few weeks, a lot has been put on Carolyn's shoulders. And we're kind of doing a little, you know, wage analysis and feeling that she is being underpaid. And so, I think, I would, I would like to discuss- And so I think I would, I would like to discuss increasing Jerilyn's wage. Honestly, I don't know what the fair, fair wage increase is. You know, I think a $2 an hour wage increase would be my recommendation. I don't know if, you know, looking at the finances, if we can afford that. But I think that would put her in, right in that, you know, kind of realm of what other cities are paying their city clerks. And within that conversation, it kind of brought some other things to light. And I had asked Jerilyn to send out the Lake of Minnesota Cities Administrative Staff.
Everybody has one.
And it just kind of goes over, you know, different positions that cities are required to have and then different positions that, you know, cities can choose to have. And, you know, I was kind of looking over some of the jobs that she does versus jobs that other people do that are within the city. And I just feel like she's got a lot on her plate. And I don't know that tonight is the night to discuss, you know, kind of how the, how the city offices run, because it's, you know, it probably is going to take some time to look into. But I think future discussion, I would love to see. I'm just getting into the Personnel Committee and so that things are a little bit, my wheels are spinning a little bit. But really, long-term, looking at what positions is she fulfilling? Because she has to? And what position is she fulfilling because it's actually in her job description? And so if we can start with an increase, and like I said, my, my initial thought was a $2 an hour increase. Definitely want to, you know, put it on the table and would hope for a little discussion from everyone else.
I guess, looking over everything, and I've done a little bit of research as well, and then looking at what's in the packet, I think, I think we need to give her a comparable wage to the other cities. And this is why I think, because there's other cities that have a city administrator, they have a clerk, they have the auditor, they, all these different roles. And she's, she's serving them all.
Yep, and that's exactly what I'm seeing.
Yeah, and if you think about it, and budget-wise, I think if we take her, even on the low end of most all of these, is $30 per hour. And I guess I look at it, we were paying Sandy, what, 39, something like that? So there's a savings right there. She went, she said for how long without a city clerk, she picked up that slack, as you said. Right now, she's picking up the slack. I, I would like to believe that, and we know that, you know, Sandy's benefits were paid. She's paying her own. Jerilyn comes with education. Sandy didn't have the education. Jerilyn comes with quite a bit of experience from Olmsted County. I think she's proven herself. And I would suggest, looking at everything that we're saving, that we saved already, add that to get her through this year. And then, because I think, in my, in my opinion, that would bridge us, that would bridge that gap until the next budgetary process. So then we budget in that 30. So I would, my opinion is to give her 30. I think she deserves it, and then if you compare it, it's very comparable. And the other thing I would say is, we had a lot of turnover. We don't want turnover.
Yeah, and I think one thing that, you know, I, I would like to say on the turnover, I don't want to be reactive and I don't want to lose our really great city staff that we already have and are all amazing, to find that we hire someone else that's maybe less qualified and then pay them more. I want to make sure that we're treating the people that we have with dignity and respect unfairly. And so I 100% agree with what you're saying.
I agree. We don't want to be knee-jerk reactive, but we need to fairly compensate the people that we do have. You know, if we base it on her colleagues in other cities around us that are set up like Orinoco, 30 is probably low, on the low side. That's the minimum.
No, based on what we were given in our packet. That's right.
Yeah.
And I'm betting that they're not the only one in their office most of the time. You know, and so that's the other big piece of it.
Can I say something or no?
Not sure.
I just want to say that I have loved working here. I've loved getting to know everybody. It's been a little stressful lately. I'm not going to lie, and it was a little stressful last summer, but I think it'll get better. And I just, I think I've proven myself, I have a super ill dad, I haven't missed any work. I'm here all the time. I'm putting in extra hours, if needed, evenings or even weekends. And I did check these cities and I not only got their, you know, their stuff to put in the packets, but I visited with them. And I actually had some advice from the city attorney to call the City of Caledonia. I had a great talk with him. He said they just kind of hit this too. So he said they actually turned their, and this can be down the road, like you said. They turned their clerk into a clerk slash administrator. But all four of the cities I talked to, Lewiston, Preston, Rushford, and I can't think of the other one right now.
Lewiston, or no.
Yeah, anyways, Caledonia, Caledonia. So all four of the cities I talked to, their city clerks with no training and no experience were at 60. And many of them did not have their CMC and they didn't even have any schooling at all. That was base. So I have my CMC, I'm a state-certified Minnesota clerk. Your past clerks did not even have that. It was a three-year program I took through the county. And I have already taken, I forwarded you guys all my education. I am literally taking virtual online stuff weekly. And I'm going for my Master City Clerk program in May for seven days. So I've worked really hard, I think I've proved myself. And it's, it's getting hard to not feel, I'm not good at this, I don't know what words to use, but I'm not feeling really valued or compensated well. And it's tough to look at what the past clerk made and then all the issues and things we've had. That's really tough for me. So I'm just being honest. I work really hard.
What was Sandy's title? Was it clerk administrator?
Clerk treasurer.
Clerk treasurer, she was here 16 years when she left, so.
I would like to see, like Lori and Jerilyn both brought up, some type of restructuring. Not even just with the city clerk position, but even, you know, just staff in general, I think, talking about public works too with the water and sewer coming up. We're going to need extra help there too. So I just think there needs to be a talk about this down the road sooner than, rather than later.
I think I, I like working with Jerilyn, she's been here, here.
Well, over a year now.
Or maybe just a year today.
Today, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Geez Louise, okay.
My grandson's birthday yesterday, so I thought I knew.
Right.
It's the 16th.
Yeah.
So anyway, I, you know, I like the, we are in the low end of the scale of our salary goals. And I, I think the, it's what we talked about back in August, is when we were going to make the $26 potentially a year in three or four months. But the workload is increasing and there's going to be more coming. And so I do think there's very appropriate for, not quite a mid-year, but an increase. What we typically do is we do reviews in July for all of our employees and recommend raises to put in for the budget for next January, which would be January 2022. And that's when they're effective. And so that's when, that's the normal process. But in the case here of the workload, and we'll talk about Jim here in just a few minutes, is paid, but at the same time, I think we need to, I like the, I like the 28. The 30 would be nice, and I think for mid-year, maybe a 29 would be a nice step up from 26. At the same time, if the council feels 30 is more appropriate, that's fine too. The 28, the $28 range is about a 60, $50,000, something like that.
I guess I'd like to see, just based on the other cities of comparable size, I'd like to see us get up into that $30 range right away.
Yeah.
Just because that's where they start. And I think that would be a good show of our appreciation and our value to Jerilyn for the work that she's been doing. So I guess I wouldn't, I, I think that one extra dollar would be just a good little gesture.
So, you want to make that motion?
Sure. I will motion.
I just ran, Mike?
So Mayor, you asking this question about this, did you check the VAT raise with the pay equity on the pay equity scales?
Right, so, and that's a good point. So in the case, there's a state ranking for clerk treasurers. And as we, I want to talk about the Public Works Director Supervisor here in just a few minutes. Right now, the clerk treasurer is just a couple of points below Public Works Supervisor, which is what Dan was, in a points range. So from that perspective, what, I'd like to read.
I did.
It's a good question, I guess if it's appropriate, I think we should check to make sure.
Yeah, I have not checked.
No, I can check with Christina.
I'm not a labor turner.
Jerilyn just said she checked.
I did check, Ryland, I talked to them on the pay equity. We talked.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And they said it's, it goes off the experience and the jobs that you're doing. And my experience wasn't considered into my wage. So once I told them that I had my CMC and all those things, they said I should have been at the top of the range.
Okay, so that's.
So they were good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, they were good with that. And we talked about the public works one too, a little bit, and the titling, and that was good too. If we retitle.
Yeah, for your title.
Yep, and for me, because I have the experience in my CMC, you guys never added that in when you looked at?
Probably not.
No, you wouldn't, I mean, no, you, the girls didn't or whatever.
So with that, would it be then titled clerk administrator?
Well, for now, I would just be clerk, and down the road, they said they would visit.
I think the experience of a clerk treasurer needs a year experience to do a budget and just get.
Right.
That's what comes to work too.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
And for everybody's awareness, the pay equity plan is administered by the Minnesota Management Bureau.
Management and budget.
Management and budget, that's what I think we stood for some, try to make up. So about three years ago, we were in a, maybe four years ago, we were in violation of the pay equity. Our salaries were lined up and so we had to pay. They notified us and I don't really pay to find, but we were susceptible to find, but we paid it right away. Pine Island experienced this a couple of years ago when they were fined for some salaries. So there's a whole adjustment process. So it's watched very closely by the state. We submit reports every two years. This is an off year, next, 2022, in January is when we submit the next one. We submitted a year ago. And we went back and forth because of all the transition of people coming and going. And then we finally got a good report too, so we're okay. All right, so if we're comfortable with proceeding with the $30 range?
Yeah. We need a second.
I didn't really make it, did I?
We kind of did.
Did you make it?
You started.
Maybe you should read it.
I'll start, I'll read, you say. I will make a motion to approve, to increase Jerilyn's hourly salary to $30 an hour effective.
I'll second. One April, or seven, or one?
Or, or not, or, I said immediately, but I don't know, how does that?
I like immediately.
Better during the pay period start.
I don't know what makes more sense, but.
Immediately is better because we just ended on a payroll.
Okay.
We just ended on one, Ryland just signed off.
Effective immediately.
Any more comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, seeing if I can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oohs?
Sorry, I'm really excited.
Keep up the good work?
Yep.
All right. Next item was Jim Hackman, is our water operator.
Ryland, we skipped the committee designation when we filled the vacant position.
Oh, yeah.
Let's go back to that real quick. Sheet on your table. Do you have one? Everybody has one. So when Trish was here, she was on the planning and zoning and parks. Recently, at the last Parks and Trails meeting, I bring a lot of information to the Parks and Trails, not the council and the city. So I would be, so I took Trish's place on the Parks and Trails, that's on that list. So, and Dana was on the Parks and Trails also. And so the question whether or not Lizzie would be on the P and Z or the parks, I guess is how we left it. Jim is on the P and Z right now. And so I guess we need to decide if Lizzie would prefer to be on the Parks Committee. It's a nice committee, a lot going on at our parks, we have eight parks. It's a nice, nice entry level, I would say, because you come from here with the city and the parks and everything. The P and Z is, you deal with developers, ordinances, rezoning, that type of thing. Jim can speak to that, I'm sorry, I'm going to take your spot there.
No, go ahead.
The P and Z, so there's just a lot of interaction there as well. So both are very, very good committees and so. Dana expressed an interest in P and Z, if you're still interested in doing that. Or you want to see in parks, whatever you would like.
I prefer parks. I use them a lot, so. I have, I have a lot of, I have a lot of experience with the parks, so.
So Lizzie, if that second Thursday every month at 7:00, 7:00 PM, you'd like to be on that committee?
Is that parks or P and Z?
P and Z.
P and Z.
P and Z, okay.
P and Z.
I think it's the perfect.
Cool.
Place for you to be.
Have to forego trivia night, but make it work, guys.
So Paul Gennetto is the chairman, Manuel Paul, from the neighborhood, so. All right, that'll work out super. Well, in this case here, the P and Z, for your respective Lizzie, the P and Z, Gold Rush and Council, the three committees are activists you follow for your tenure.
Can you repeat that again? P and Z, Gold Rush, and what was the third?
Council.
Thank you.
Gold Rush leads on the second Monday of every month, 6:00 PM. Make a motion that we sign it, Lizzie, the P and Z, in her new position. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? See if I can say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oohs? Okay, Jim Hackman is our water operator with us. Seven years?
Almost five.
Five? Feels like seven.
Yes.
So, you did a great job. Last year, he got his water, let's see, water license. Credit to him. Also a certificate in trees and pesticides. Boiler, yes, boiler. The master. So he's been filling in by himself. Mid-weekends, we do a well check, we text the two well houses, the reservoirs, on Saturday, and on Sunday. We have a public works. When we have a public works supervisor, they alternate themselves. He's done a great job, brings a lot of experience to us. It's a very critical job, not only taking care of the water, but also just the general maintenance, and just the wherewithal, he lives here in the city. Very knowledgeable for the city, excellent worker. He really enjoys his work as well. I'd like to propose a two-dollar hour raise. For him as well. He's, uh, gonna be a critical piece to a water and sewer project going forward. I think that's very, very important, and we. Like to reward him for his work that he's done so far, and at the same time, uh, we want to make sure that he stays with us as well.
Jim is a fabulous guy. Jim is a fabulous guy, and he's wonderful to work with, he's always kind and respectful.
And, uh, the research I've done on Survey Navigator, I think that's a very comparable wage for a water system operator, an opportunity for as well, so. So I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Sometime here, just now, we have Lizzie on board too, and we haven't done this with Dan, but we need to have a tour of the facility sometime here in the near future, when it's nice and warm, and kind of. Get you aware of what public works is all about, and kind of show you the lay of the land more, so that what you may have experienced, and, and, uh, we can have Jim do that as well.
Great. And you could take me too, because I've never received.
I want to go too, it's fun. And I have a whole cargo to ladies.
You have, have you, are you, no, you, we all need to go.
It's super fun, the end to go.
Well, we have to go in pairs, because we can't all be together, but. Boiler's like, yep.
City of Oneona does that, they do a tour of the whole town on a bus, but they notice it as a public meeting.
Oh, okay.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, that'd be fun.
All right, all those in favor of the increase for Jim, seeing if I may say hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Great, that's, uh, that's approved, and that's effective also with the next paper. Next item is just, uh, something before the council, our previous deputy clerk. She resigned on March the fifth. Uh, she was in her probation period, she was in almost four and a half months into a six-month probation. First half policy, the policy reads such that the, uh, you cannot deaccrew PTO during the time, but. In, uh, her case, she did not leave a two-week notice that she was leaving, and first half policy is states that. The PTO that you've accrued, you can start taking, uh, after six months. So in this case, she was here less than six months. And did not give a two-week notice. So we're talking with our HR attorneys, attorney, they came back with a comment that it was, uh, up to this, the council's decision. Based on the situation of whether or even not, whether or not we approved the PTO. It's up to the council.
How much PTO was it?
A lot.
Seventy.
Seventy-eight, eighteen.
Seventy-eight dollars.
And three-point-five-four comp, so pretty much eighty, eighty-one.
So there's, um, so we, the council needs to make a motion whether or not she was, she was given her last payroll through the payroll period. But if there's anything else, it'd be a separate check, so.
I would like to move that we do not pay the PTO, uh, because there was no two-week notice given, and, um, it was a very abrupt. No conversation was had, it was a note, and, um, I, I just feel like. It, it put us in a really bad place, and I, I just feel like, if she would have had the respect to give us a two-week notice, I would have said pay it out, but. Without that notice, I don't think we should. That's my motion. Should I restate that?
Is there a second?
A second.
Jim? Yeah, it's unfortunate to happen, um. But you never know, uh, when those things happen, but it's unfortunate, but we're in the process of soliciting applications right now, so. Any other comments? All those in favor of the denying the PTO and counseling, if I may say hi.
Hi.
Hi, close? Next item is, uh, audit City Hall, and, uh, is it at your request, or is that just a general one?
Um, I think it was either.
Jim meant sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. So. What I'd like to see is, is some type of an audit, just because of, you know, things that are coming out, and, um, I mean, I was at the firemen, fire department meeting. And there was a question on what they really had in their general fund, and it sounded like it was, it was kind of complicated for Carolyn to really even. Find the account. And when the amount was given. There, I mean, they, they, they weren't too favorable of it, they, they thought that they had a lot more than that. And I, I would, I think just as a best practice, I think it's a good thing when you're changing, the changing of the guards in, in something like this, to have an audit.
I agree.
On an outside firm.
Yes, I agree, I actually looked that up too, and it's highly suggested that when you have a change of office, like we did, not office, but personnel. Yeah, yes, I agree.
So, so there is an audit in process for last year. Smith and Schaefer, they were hired to do the twenty-twenty audit, that's been in process, Carolyn's been working in Kathy both the time, uh, their chair was doing a lot of the work with. Smith and Schaefer to get the books into a position that. They were acceptable to the standpoint of the foreman, let me back up, she was working with Smith and Schaefer to organize. So it was more easy for Smith and Schaefer to do the audit for twenty-twenty. And based on what you've uncovered and realigned, there's a lot of, the funds were all there, it's just a matter of the journal entries to put them into the right budgets and the fund accounts.
There was a lot of, um.
So.
I get a headache just thinking about it. Okay, um, there was a lot of, like, flipping accounts, and that I don't understand, because to me, you put it in the right account from the start. The only way that you're flipping an account, uh, like engineering, um, we have reimbursable engineering from like FEMA or StanTech. Then we put it in a reimbursable account, then when it comes in, we move it, but to me, you shouldn't be moving funds and donations all over the place. So as the day that Dan Sun contacted me, and he said, what's in my donation fund? Of course, I plop in the GL number, pull the report from, I don't remember the number now, but I think it was like twelve thousand, and he's like, it should be double that, and I'm like. So then I got frantic, and I started trying to check, you know, the background of it and everything, and there was some donations, like in eighteen and nineteen, that would like go in the Gold Rush fund. And then they'd be gone, so, you know, and she must have did a journal entry and moved them, but we cannot track every single one. And if you can, I don't know how to do it, you know what I mean? I can track the last one, but not all the steps. We've called Tyler Tech, we've spent hours, I mean, me and Shannon asked her, you know, she's the one I've been working with, we have been working on this since, what, October one?
Well, that's, that's true, at the same time, um, the Gold Rush pull tab donations, you look at twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, they've been going into the capital improvement fund. There is a line item for pull tabs, so the pull tab donations identify everything that's been in twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen. So the funds are there, there's been no. Improper movement of funds or anything, but it is there, and we can, I can, I brought the copies in today or yesterday, showing where the pull tab donations go to, so it goes into the capital improvement fund. Last year, the fire department used it for, uh, for jackets. A year ago, in twenty-nineteen, they submitted thirty-five thousand to use towards a payment towards the fire truck. We paid the fire truck off, and they bought a thermaging, thermal imaging, thermal imager with a gold gun, so there is, there isn't documentation of how they've used the funds to.
Right, and I think, and that's, that's what's important, as long as they can follow the money trail, so everything can be accounted for, and I, and like I say, it's just, I think, the changing of the guards, it's a good practice. And then we start all fresh, you know where everything is, you know where everything is, I, I think it's, in my opinion, it's the right thing to do.
Was the audit in twenty-twenty because of the change, or was that just?
No, we do that every year, we've been doing audits for the last six, seven, eight, nine years.
Every year?
Every year we do an audit.
Okay, is it?
Usually the audits come out in the May, June timeframe.
Is it the same depth, is it what we're talking?
The same type of audit?
Right.
Is it as detailed, I guess, would be my question, rather than just a regular yearly audit, is it a more broad?
Trust me, I'm going through every single line item and account in line by line on the bank statement, right now, we're on November, so we're almost done, we're almost done.
So I feel like it's, they're audit, they're, we hired them to do our audit.
She's good.
Every year, so.
Does that feel sufficient to you, that that's, that's what you're looking for, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, as, as long as it's, it's broad, so just, so everything can be accounted for, because I, I, I cringe a little bit when I hear someone say, whoa, no, 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 we, we should have way more than that.
I think what that was though, Jim, okay, is that different donations have come through, and we sent them, um, called Tyler Tech, who is our computer software program, and I said to them. I don't know why, but the fire department does not have their own donation GL number, and they should, in my opinion, just like, just like the city does, you know what I mean? And so we created one, and now we have to move those funds to that, and then going forward, that is solely their donation fund. They didn't have that, so, you know, you have to, Sandy had her own way of doing things, so I don't know, you know, I don't know her. She had her own way of doing things, I'm sure it made perfect sense to her, but it didn't to me, to me, let's get a fireman GL number, and then they know where their funds are.
But can we show them, like a statement?
We can when we get everything moved, we're not done yet.
This period, this is everything, so, it's just like a checking account, so they can see the ins and outs.
So once we get everything in and out, I can print them a report every month if they want.
And they look.
But we're still working on it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Around November. Six weeks.
So we've always had good audits, in the previous years, we've never had anything wrong, and I'm sure that we continue to be the same thing next year. Last item on the personnel was. Public Works Supervisor. Retiling to a Public Works Director. This is, uh, another. Positioning our, positioning our public works department for the water and sewer project coming up. It's a lot of work, probably some manpower staffing. Done early next year, uh, when we really get into it, or similar late fall, but we feel like the supervisor position is got some importance going forward, and we like to. Reprioritize it from a public work supervisor to a director, and so that will help us, uh, with that title to help raise that salary as well. So make it more attractive for people to come to our local and also retain them as well. So we're, so what we're doing now, we finished our public work supervisor posting, we got two people. We interviewed them. Jim Dana, Jim and, uh, Carolyn and I. But at the same time, we really would like to do a posting for a public works director. The two people we interviewed, we told them that they were interested, those, their two interviews that we had last week would go towards the director. While the process, I think, in your packet is a proposed, uh, job description for a director. Very similar to a supervisor, it's just that we're, uh, looking at putting it into that lower thirty-dollar range an hour, which is very comparable for a city our size of directors. So we'll go through a, a posting hopefully yet this week for one week, and then at the end of next week, hopefully by the end of the week, then we'll do an interview for those that we've received. There are those, the two interviews we did for the supervisor position, and, uh, and then go forward with coming back to council with that proposal, we'll get higher.
How long did we have the original posting up? Supervisor?
Ten days.
Ten days.
I, I would like to put this up for longer, um, than a, just a week, um, and then I would also recommend that. We would have the, the two people that did already interview, um, submit applications for this position, and not just grant them. The opportunity, so that it's all buttoned up, and if they would like to apply, they are welcome to apply. Um, if you want to use the interview from before, I, I don't have a problem with that, um, and then go forward with a second interview. Uh, this is a, a big deal, um, it's, it's a big position, and I just don't want to, um, I don't want to get into a situation where we don't have enough time. To get qualified candidates, and I also don't want to get into a situation where we interviewed someone for the supervisor position, and then just offer them the job because. It was convenient, and so, and, and I don't, I don't know the background on the other two applicants, I just want to make sure that we open it up and, um, make it fair.
Makes for a good history record too. And we don't remember they had an interview, so I think it's, we will ask them to do that as well. Um, so the week, we're seeing a lot of week notifications or week postings, we've done two weeks, ten days, seems like it's a. Sweet spot of a week is what really is, is, if you guys look, and they'll see it, the only problem, one problem with that with the Zambroda paper, we only get one publication. If we go ten days, we can get two publications, posting in the paper, because it's only Wednesday.
Are we seeing more applicants from newspapers, or are we seeing more from, like, Indeed and?
With the deputy clerk, we see more on Indeed, with the public works, we tend to pull from the local newspapers. Because usually, you know, the maintenance men and stuff are, you know, um.
Yeah, the Indeed hasn't.
I do like the ten-day idea though, because it does give people a little bit of a chance, it's hard to just catch it in the paper one time. I don't know.
So we'll post it for ten days.
So two weeks in Zambroda News?
Two Wednesdays for sure.
And do you want post bulletin too?
It's expensive.
It's very expensive.
Do you want to spend the money on it?
That's up to you guys.
That's, uh.
What, what is the expense? It is, it would.
Four twelve a week. And then you only get two, is it Tuesday and Saturday round? Two publications and it's almost five hundred dollars.
I mean, that would pull from a larger.
A larger spectrum, for sure.
Way more people get, so post bulletin is on the record.
What's the cost of putting it in the paper up in the cities, because they would, don't, I, I would imagine they have a package where it's almost, you know, if you put it in the cities, there's ways that they promote that throughout other streams in addition to that newspaper itself.
Yeah.
And if the cost isn't significantly different, and the benefit is greater to increase the visibility, that could be potentially, that would be worth exploring.
Right, I do put it, um, on the league of Minnesota cities, that's free, the Minnesota Rural Water, that's free, um, of course, our Facebook, our website, um. Oh, and also with the post bulletin post, you get Jobs HQ, I, I've never heard of that, it's some new thing in Rochester, Jobs HQ.
It's where the post bulletin.
Yeah, so that comes with it.
Okay.
I like the idea of posting it in the cities.
Okay, so check, like, you mean like Star Tribune, or?
Yeah, the Star Tribune or the Pioneer Press.
We'll, uh, we'll send an email out when we find out for sure, what the post bulletin.
Great, I'll get a quote on all three of them.
Okay.
Okay.
How do we? Decide then?
Go through the interview process.
I'm sorry, how do we decide whether to do?
The newspaper.
Whether to spend the money?
We need to have a motion of what our budget is here.
Right, we have to, maybe.
Well, uh, we spent. Close to a thousand dollars for the deputy clerk.
We've got a ton of that.
Majority, we write down the deputy clerk, we've got over seventy, uh, applications, and we've got maybe six possibilities.
And you, I even think, like, again, looking for the future, there should be just an audit, like, this is how much we spend on personnel advertising, you know what I mean? Like, it shouldn't even have to come every month, every time we hire somebody, it should just be like.
Right.
In our, somewhere, but that's for the future, but, so why, if we spent that much for a deputy clerk, why wouldn't we do the same for public works? To me, it would make sense. To me, that would just, it would make sense, it's, you know, a very important position, and especially with what we have coming for. To me, that would just, it would make sense. It's, you know, a very important position, and especially with what we have coming forward in the next
We'll get some quotes back from, they, we'll probably do just the one week with the post bulletin as opposed to two weeks. And then, just to keep the cost down for not spending another, I mean, we can, but the majority, the, the majority of the applications came off of Facebook. What we said that we've got so far, and it's, it's quite a gambit of, like, there's only two or three that we really...
Well, like you said, though, you, you really feel like you haven't had that same response via Facebook with this, so we have to try something different.
Right.
Of those forty-seven, only one sent in a city application. Rest of them all just sent all that one Facebook.
You know.
Okay, so we'll post it for ten days. We'll get quotes for the review and...
Hi, New York's spouse. Russ.
Hi, that's it?
Nothing.
Just the Star Tribune, okay.
Yep.
So what date would we potentially hire this supervisor then, or when would we like to have this filled? It's May one, we start mowing, and three days a week, you don't really see me or the seasonal guy, so.
That's a good point, Jim. So.
March sixteenth.
So we could be doing potentially interviews April first, second. Here. If that person gives a two-week notice, then it's probably April nineteenth. Probably the earliest. You know, ten days, if you go a week, that'll help that, bring it back a week. This will be tight to get some, if you publish it, if you get it out there on the eighteen. And we get, we're almost running at two weeks to get two Zemroda papers. It's a long time. If we get the eighteenth, we get the twenty-fourth on the Zemroda, which is a Wednesday. Close out on the twenty-sixth, we interview the twenty-ninth thirtieth. Maybe still get some, potentially somebody here on the twelfth, the week of the twelfth, but I don't know.
Any, any way we go, it's gonna be.
Jim's comment, too, that one April, we hire our seasonal worker, and they start mowing, and so there's it's not a heavy mowing, but it does start, you know, so.
I'm sure I'll probably have to, I mean, take a week, maybe two, to show this new guy the ropes, I mean.
Right.
So, I don't know.
Sooner the better. I agree with Jim, it's the sooner the better.
All right, well, um...
But I still think we need a motion to approve cost for advertising, so I, I will move that we spend up to, is eight hundred dollars enough for Star Tribune? Or Pioneer Press?
That should get us a good week of post bulletin letter for the Star Tribune, maybe, and one add in the Zemroda paper.
So, eight hundred dollars for advertising for the Public Works Director position.
I'll second that motion. Did we make a motion to retitle the position from supervisor to Director? Would you like to make a friendly amendment to that, too?
I would like to. I would like to make a motion that we create a Public Works Director position instead of the Public Works Supervisor position. And I would like to approve eight hundred dollars or up to eight hundred dollars for advertisement of that position.
I'll second that. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Arborist. Arborist, there's a quote for tree removal for fourteen hundred and forty dollars. Make a motion that we approve that Arborist bill for removing trees in the house park. For most of our items. Is there a second?
I will second that.
I came up about our tree contract with Arborist, and we'll do some research on that. Get back to the April meeting. This is a contract that we do for a year at a time. But this is a good work to get done right away, so. All those in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. It's approved. Next item was a, our twenty-twenty-one four notes of part license renewal camping with the Elston County. Two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Make a motion that we approve paying the permit for two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public Works has, that's approved. Public Works has a quote for tool cap roof quote for seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Wanna make a motion, Lizzie?
Just sitting here thinking, what the heck's a tool cap roof?
That's why we need that tour.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I move to approve the, the spend on the tool cap roof?
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
That was three at once. Who wants it? Okay, Dana.
Comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Next item is the Public Works quote for a new locator. Probably many years since we've had a new locator, this is for locating water lines.
That's gonna be important.
Sure.
So that'll be important.
Yeah, it's very important, and it's, uh... So I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of that for five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Second?
Second.
Comments?
I just wanna make a comment quick about the, the bristle. Is that what we use on the for cleaning the roads and that, for the park and stuff?
Yeah.
I would just like to say that that is just the best thing ever, and we appreciate it for the people who use the parks a lot and the roads, so thank you.
Yeah, that's probably the most used, I mean, tool, so.
Yes, appreciate it.
All those in favor of the locator purchasing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, planning and zoning, we had a rezone of one and two, Block One OrnoCo Commercial Park, which is the fifth and Fifth Street Southeast, and also the it's in front of the OrnoCo Storage, and on the west side of Minnesota Avenue, B two to M one for a flat storage area. It was rezoned and approved in planning and zoning. Jim, do you have any other comments, or?
Could we, could you, I wanna just make sure I understand exactly where this is.
Essentially across the street from Tricia's house.
You're on it. So, thank you. Across the street from Tricia's house. Okay.
So here's the OrnoCo self-storage.
Yep.
Tricia lives here.
Yep.
And of course, this is Fifth Street.
So it'd be that.
It's this undeveloped block here.
Perfect, okay.
There's a residential property here.
Perfect. I just wanted to click, double check, cause I knew it exactly.
And it's lots one and two?
It's just.
Lot one.
Aye.
Rezone lot one and two, lot one.
I don't have the lots on here, if it's lots one or two.
Yeah, it's a lot. That's issue.
So, Erica, any comment?
Yes.
Sorry. So I do have some concerns with this. I, I have not reviewed this at all. But you have to, in order to rezone a property, you have to do that by ordinance. So there's no ordinance in the packet. Did anybody draft an ordinance?
Evidently not.
Okay, so you have to, you know, that's a legislative decision, it's not a judicial decision like a variance. You know, you're not approving or denying a variance, or approving and denying a conditional use permit. And that's something where you're, you're applying the standards in your code against the application and making a judgment as to whether it meets the standards. That's, that's not what this is. This is a amendment to your zoning map, which is, you, you adopt the zoning map by legislation, and you therefore rezone or amend it by legislation. So I think you do need an ordinance to effectively accomplish that. And I don't see one in the packet, so I think it's gonna be difficult for it. The other thing is, when was the, the application submitted? Does anybody know that? The date, does anybody know the date of the application? Is it in the packet?
We didn't get it. I, I don't know, Ryland. We don't have anything in our packet for this.
The P and Z minutes were set out on Friday.
I don't know anything about it either, nothing.
I mean, I, I was at the, I listened in on the P and Z meeting, so I know, but, yeah, the minutes are in.
It was at the last.
The minutes are in here, but shouldn't we have more information than just that? That's why I was wondering.
Minutes, there is a finding in time. There's three, three zoning questions, but there's no...
So there's other issues.
There's no map or anything.
Right, that's why.
There's other issues, too, like, you know, you, and I don't know anything about this, but, for example, you could put a conditions on the rezoning. You could rezone the property conditional to something such as putting up a fence where it butts the residential property. I don't think it says, and maybe factors, I don't know what the plan says. Their conditions might relate to what that business does, you know.
All of this was discussed at the planning and zoning.
It was.
But we just don't have it in front of us.
Yes, it's just not in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and they, they have, we had talked about the fencing and, and the surface and, and landscaping, everything.
Good, so that, that's.
And the, and the wetlands.
Right.
Yeah.
So all that should be a condition of your approval, that they do that. And so then if they don't do that, then you, they don't get the rezoning, you could pull the rezoning back. Does that make sense? So that's what you're supposed to do, and it's gotta be by ordinance, so you can't just voice vote, approve of. You know, the map will get screwed up, it's not gonna get changed right. So there's gotta be a legal description of the ordinance. So I looked in my old emails, we've done this a few times, and we did do it by ordinance, you know, years ago, Cedar Woodlands, there was a rezoning. I don't know if it was twenty eighteen, but, so there was an ordinance in the packet for that one, nobody asked me, so I didn't, I didn't look at it, but that, that's kind of the issue.
I got a second, you kind of... So, you've heard a conversation, we're not quite in a position for the council to approve the rezoning, even though it came out of the recommendation for P and Z, but the council needs a little more clarification, and we also have to put it into an ordinance. So is that, is that a detriment if we wait, delay a vote to approve it?
It, it would be. My client is, is hoping to, to start, we wanted to get the, the final site plan into the city engineer for review and approval here tomorrow. It, it would just delay his ability to start work.
Well, the other option is to, with the attorneys of support, we could draw an ordinance up and have a quick special meeting next week sometime. Take care of this issue.
I don't care what you do, that's fine. So when was the application submitted for the rezon?
February eleventh.
Okay, so you have until April eleventh. You just have to do it within sixty days, so.
We have our special meeting, or we have our water sewer meeting next.
Twenty-second and twenty-third.
Yeah, it's April twentieth.
But that's a public.
One's a hearing, one's an open house.
There's not, it's not a meeting.
It's a public hearing, there's no... Joe?
I haven't seen site plans that have been submitted to me. Might be a good idea to have them submitted to staff so that we can review them and perhaps reflect comments within ordinance that would be considered by the council. That would maybe make sense. I don't, I don't know what the timeline is, but obviously it's March sixteenth, and we're coming up on spring, and road bans are coming on and those types of things, so seems to me that not a lot's gonna get done over the next month in terms of construction. So it, maybe we do have a little bit of time that wouldn't, wouldn't impact that process.
I think it's important to get it done. I, for one, would like, you know, obviously to do the ordinance, but also like to see plans. And, and, which is probably also submitted to P and Z, drafts of them, drafts of them, and then also more detailed information from P and Z before we make a decision. Because I think if it was, you know, cause it's rezoning, so that's, it's, it's, it's important that we get it correct.
I mean, it would be normal to have that in the packet.
Right.
The application for it, so.
Well, I think the issue was Kathy was handling that, and then she resigned, so, you know, it got through the...
Sure.
I don't do anything with that, but I will now.
So what, Joe, is, you're asking for a site plan to be reviewed and approved in the...
The normal stuff that you would submit, I'm sure that they know the drill, yeah?
So you did give this to planning and zoning, so Paul would have everything we probably need. We just, we, we don't have it here.
Paul just had a draft of a grading plan.
He, I, yeah, we had shared some things early on when we were having the discussions about the site and what, what we would need to do to move forward, and that's when the rezoning came forward, so that's the direction we were going, was to rezon. And then once it was rezoned, then we could go through the, the plan review process.
So is this gonna require a conditional use permit and a rezon?
Not that I'm aware of.
What is the business?
It's a storage site, so.
Series expanding?
Not affiliated.
Oh.
Separate, separate ownership. It would be, it's gonna be a surface storage lot for boats, RVs, ATVs, trailers. Kind of the, the big toys that people need to store somewhere. So it'll have, have limited traffic and whatnot to it.
Not covered?
Not covered. Nope. It'll be just a, a lot.
Lot pavement.
So with this, wouldn't we need to have a public hearing also for changing the?
We did.
The P and Z.
We, they did that already.
Yes, the answer is yes, and I assume they, they do that. Then you really, really can't go forward then, if you didn't do that.
That was all done at P and Z, and we approved it. That was all done at P and Z, and we approved, so this was our next step.
So circle back around to either I don't think we really wanna add it to the March twenty-second agenda, the public hearing.
I don't even think, is it possible? I don't know.
So I think we move it. So, Joe, you need some, so you do need to see the site plan before we do the ordinance?
I would think it would be a good idea. You should always have your city engineer review all this, and then the city attorney review it.
So I'm thinking we just wait, keep it on our April twentieth agenda. Develop the ordinance, and then go ahead, Joe.
One, one thing I was going to propose to the council, we talked about a little bit, is, you know, if, if the councils will, willing to have a special meeting in early April to look at some of the easement and property acquisition issues or items with the wastewater treatment facility. We've got some appraisals in, and before we can put purchase agreements together and send out offers and start to engage folks, we need to present that information to you. And there's a lot going on right now, and thought that maybe a special meeting in early April, we could handle that. And then, you know, this might slide into that meeting as well.
I like that idea.
So we can, we can set a date for, you know, early April, that would be.
Should we do that right now?
I think that would be the idea.
I agree.
The P and Z meeting in April is April eighth, it's the second Thursday. I don't know if we're gonna be ready on the first of April, or more like the fifteenth, that's only three days, four days.
I, I think the first of, from my perspective, the first would be, okay, I don't know, if you guys agree, that's, looks like a Thursday?
Thursday is the first, yep. Sorry, Ryland, I'm behind you.
I'm traveling, that tastes like, I know, the first is not available on my calendar.
What about the fifth? Oh, parks and trails and first responders. Six?
The sixth?
Maybe back up to and go to the 31st.
Are you gone then as well, Lori?
Yes.
I figured it wasn't just a one-day trip, so.
Yes, I understand, yes.
If you make it the sixth, that's a Tuesday. I have a W meeting, but I could probably forego that one for one month.
What about the 30th? Oh, Lori's gone. Never mind, sorry, Lori.
If we go beyond the eighth, then we just might as well include in the 20th on the meeting.
I think, would anyone have trouble with the sixth?
Fifth is a.
The fifth is parks and trails and first responders, so the sixth is open.
We go with the sixth?
Go with the sixth, yep.
We have a special meeting on the sixth to take care of the rezoning and along with any other wastewater projects. So what are we gonna do to help assist in the drawings, Joe, and returning them back, as possible, it'd be great.
Thanks for your understanding, we apologize.
What time on the sixth is just the normal time?
6:30.
At that meeting, do we like need to do anything special? We'll be talking about the property acquisition component for the wastewater treatment facility and reviewing valuations for that property as well as
Yeah.
the easements.
So you have to, it just depends if you're gonna have the purchase agreement there. If you have the purchase agreement, you have to have the planning commission review it. Or you can dispense with the planning commission review by four-fifths vote of the council. Anytime you acquire or dispose of real property in Minnesota, you have to follow that statute. And you always have to do a resolution that just says, you know, we dispense with planning commission review because we find that the acquisition has no relationship to the comprehensive plan. Or you can have planning and zoning, look at it. I don't know if the purchase agreement's gonna be ready by that time, though, either. So that's kind of the timing issue. What else is gonna be discussed?
Valuation for individual easements.
The valuation for individuals.
Utility easements.
All 150 easements, or?
Oh, there's, yeah, 60-some-odd easements that we're paying for.
I don't know, I'll have to think about it. I mean, I don't think they can approve. You have at least a resolution to approve those, and you'd have to, you have legal descriptions for all those?
Yes.
Okay. I'll have to think about it. I don't think so, but I have to consider, I don't think you can approve the purchase agreement without the special resolution of a planning commission. And usually you wouldn't do that until, you know, you have an agreement to buy the property for a certain price from the, this is, I think you're talking in reference to the township parcel that we're purchasing, correct?
That is one of the.
That one of ours, and that's the main, where the facility's gonna be located.
Yes.
I mean, so for that one, you'd wanna have the purchase agreement drafted, send it to the seller, have them basically approve it and then put it in the packet and have the council review it. So I don't know, I mean, we need to talk about it, I don't know where we're.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know, I was assuming that we'd want the council to approve whatever we're gonna offer this.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Before we put together a purchase agreement and send it to them, otherwise it's just me putting in the number.
No, 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 we can't do that, I didn't, I didn't understand. So, that's based on the appraisal we were waiting for.
Yeah, we have the appraisal, and the assumption is the council will just, you know, pick a number that's close to the appraisal, but it's not my decision.
So, one special thing we might do is have a closed session of the council for appraisal data. There's a part of the Data Practices Act that deals with appraisal data that allows that information to be non-public. Until an offer is accepted, then it becomes public, and that's kind of obvious why they put that in the statute, because if you make it public, then the person you're buying the property from is gonna know, you know, it hurts your negotiating powers as a city, so that's an exception to the open meeting law. Does that make sense? So you'll wanna have a closed session, at least as part of that, but that can be in the agenda, that's not, that's what I would say. Yeah, that's fine, can do that.
All right. Meeting on the 6th, 6:30. Last item on P and Z is a schedule to a public hearing for the tiny home ordinance, which was in your packet, I think. Was that missed too?
Nope, we got it.
So that would be in there, and if you get a chance, if you haven't, take a look or read it, they've been spending, they've been working on this for about a year and a half, probably. For different iterations and Mike reviewed it here just recently, and submitted some comments back to P and Z, and I think they've incorporated those. So I'll make a motion. We have a public hearing for the city council, no, that's a planning and zoning public hearing. April 8th, at 7:05. And here again, that will be a ordinance developing when it comes to the council on the 20th then.
You said April 8th?
April 8th is P and Z.
Yep.
At 7:05. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Jim? You got any comments?
I'm just, this is exciting, I'm really glad the planning and zoning took the time to put this together. I know it was in the works for a long time.
Somewhere, a developer would wanna do a community design, I think that's gonna be all set up. All right, all those in favor? So if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Public Water, wastewater hearing is set for March 22nd at 6:30, next Monday night. I think we're all set, with our, continue to refine our Zoom skills.
We're gonna, I think, we got, we had a long meeting. With Joe and I tried to, I think it's gonna work, so.
I'm assuming we'll be here, we'll at least be on Zoom bright and early, like at 6:00.
I'm good, yeah, I'll be here for sure to get everything. And like we had said, we'll try again, maybe Monday, just to make sure everything's smooth. Do a drive, test run.
And so, so everybody knows on that, what we've kind of talked about is that for a couple different reasons, I'm gonna be in my office and be presenting via Zoom, so hopefully it goes out well and, and everybody can see what we're, what I'm saying and the information that I present. And I'm gonna kind of try to facilitate the Zoom, we have questions.
And you'll have one of your employees here.
Yes.
To represent, okay, yep.
So Mark will be here?
Uh, I think Mackenzie will be here.
Sorry?
Mark won't be here.
You won't be here, okay.
Mackenzie will be here.
So I'll be here and whatever, whoever you designated, designated is okay. All right, it's a big evening, we've been looking forward to this for several years, so it's a big step to get behind us, so. The, the last item is our retaining wall. It was a letter in your packet and some designs, you have a large 11 by 17 paper in front of you. The master, the printout. Drawing the options. And, why don't you go ahead, Joe, give me your comments?
Sure, so, yeah, we were asked to do a feasibility report on how to best address several steep slopes on the west side of Minnesota Avenue. One of the sections was south of East Center Street, the other section is immediately north of East Center Street. So the section south of East Center Street is a steep slope that's been difficult to maintain. Within that slope, there is some bedrock, so you can't see it as the surface, but if you go into that slope a few feet, you'll, you'll likely find weathered bedrock. In addition to that, we have a water service going to the property owner at the middle lot, that's Mr. Johnson's property. And then there's also a proposed water service that would go to the property immediately south of Mr. Johnson's property, that's an undeveloped lot that is developable, and with the proposed sewer and water project, there is a water service that would cross Minnesota Avenue and would go to that lot. So, um, we've kind of evaluated the existing conditions as well as proposed improvements and looked at different options to improve that slope. And so the leading option that was proposed was essentially the construction of a retaining wall. And so we looked at where that retaining wall would best fit into the slope and facilitate not only improving the slope and improving the maintenance situation, but also that would facilitate people getting onto their cars and potentially adding a sidewalk in that area if, at some point in the future, the city chooses to do that. And so we looked at that and we decided that the best place for a future retaining wall would be about seven feet into the slope or seven feet to the west of the existing curb, height of curves. And so that would be where the face of the wall would be. And so that retaining wall was evaluated, we looked at it based on some survey data, we set up some profiles and cross-sections and ultimately fit that retaining wall into that slope, it'd be about a 240-foot retaining wall. And the retaining wall height would vary anywhere from two and a half feet up to seven feet high. We looked at a couple different options for the retaining wall. The property owner suggested, one of the property owners suggested that he thought a large gravity block retaining wall might be, might, might be cost-effective and look nice. So those retaining wall block are essentially, you know, they're very, they're very slightly in size, depending on the manufacturer that you work with and choose, but they're about 18 and a half, about 18 inches high and about four feet wide. So that was one option that we looked at, and essentially that's the first cost estimate that we have in the feasibility report. The second retaining wall block type would be a more traditional modular block retaining wall. Those block are about eight inches high and about 18 inches wide. And both retaining wall block are perfectly fine for that scenario. The modular, modular block retaining wall requires some tiebacks because of the height of the wall, and obviously both types of facilities need to be excavated into the rock and backfilled with granular material that drains, and we put a drain tile behind the wall. And also after the wall is built, we'd have to put a fence on the top of the wall, just because of the height of the fence, we obviously wouldn't want somebody falling over a seven-foot-high wall. Just for public safety, because it is all located within the right-of-way. So, we did kind of look at those two different options. The large block retaining wall had an estimated project cost of about $124,000. Project cost means construction costs, a 15% contingency or a 10% contingency and a 15% factor for engineering and inspection and survey and those types of things. The modular block retaining wall, the smaller block retaining wall that many of you are undoubtedly familiar with is a little bit less expensive, it's about $95,000 to construct that retaining wall. I believe Ryland printed out some nice pictures of, you know, some examples of what this type of facility would look like. And so he's got an illustration in the handout here of the existing slope. And the second illustration really illustrates that large block, that gravity block retaining wall with a fence on top. And the third illustration is a smaller modular block retaining wall, similar to what we're kind of posing here. And so, you know, you see these types of facilities in various locations, and there's, you know, pros and cons to both. Obviously, there's a cost difference. You know, and aesthetics certainly come into play, and, and the larger block retaining wall, we've included a architectural finish on that wall because of what is typically supplied is just grade. And so you're gonna wanna stain or put an architectural finish on that wall typically. Whereas the modular block, they come in different colors and there's a little bit, a little bit more option with that type of wall. So those are really the two options in conjunction with that south half. Obviously, the smaller block one is slightly more, or less expensive, but both, both facilities will work. The area immediately north of East Center Street, there's also a steep slope in that area, that's adjacent to an undeveloped lot. Within that undeveloped lot, or within the right-of-way, adjacent to that undeveloped lot, we have some room to do some regrading. Because there's no buildings, no structures there, we can grade all the way back to the right-of-way line. And so if you kind of look at the plan sheet, I guess I should have pointed this out, but there are some essentially typical sections of what that slope would look like. And so, in the, on the bottom half of the sheet, the upper typical section illustrates what that slope looks like. The dashed line is the existing slope, you can see it's fairly steep, you can also see the concrete curb and gutter and street there. And then the slope comes up off the back of curb and gets pretty fairly steep. And so what we propose to do in this area, if we went with the grading option, is we'd have a four-foot-flat boulevard area, and then behind that, we would come up at a two and a half to one slope. So one foot vertical, two and a half foot horizontal, and essentially that would allow us to tie into the right-of-way. So we would excavate that material. Again, there's rock in this area, so we would excavate the rock over-excavate the rocks, so we can actually plant some, replace some topsoil on top of the rock and revegetate it. A two and a half to one is still a steep slope. Much less steep than it currently is. But would be a huge improvement over what's there, and then we'd still have the opportunity to, you know, if we wanted to widen the boulevard or improve the slope further, when that parcel developed, we'd have that option. The cost to do that proposed improvement is about $14,400. So still pretty expensive, predominantly because of the need to excavate the rock face of that bank in order to to soften the slope. And so really, that's kind of what we're, we're looking at here, and I should have, as I pointed, or talked through the retaining wall slope, talked about the typical section of the retaining wall here, I'm sure you guys kind of all had a chance to look at that, but again, illustrates that the face of the wall, seven feet behind the back of the curb, and then the slope would go up at a much gentler four to one, so four feet horizontal for every foot vertical, that's a 25% grade, so very maintainable, very mobile.
I have a quick question. So the slope that you're talking about on the north side, would that be maintainable and mobile?
Yes. Typically, the standard that I like to use is a three to one is maintainable. So this is a two and a half to one. So it's a little steeper than that. Is it maintainable? Yes. Is it a little uncomfortable? Yes. Is it a lot better than what's there? Yes.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Currently, what is Dan's slope? Like, what is, what would you do?
Um, it probably varies. It's a little steeper than, a little less steep than a one to one, maybe a 1.2 to one, 1.5 to one in spots. So it's steep.
So Joe, if we were to, this is added cost, but if we were to add like, I'm just guessing, a 140, if you just, it looks like it'd take like about a four, five-foot wall to get to a one-to-four slope on that north, on the north side of the. I think it's important that we continue your discussion here before we go too much further regarding the water and what we can, what we can do or what can't do until the water project in next year.
Well, that kind of brings, brings us to the discussion of sequencing, you know, obviously the retaining wall cuts into the existing slope. There is a water service that goes into that slope, and so it is likely that that retaining wall. it is likely that that retaining wall would impact that existing water service or would decrease the amount of cover over that water service so that it would be susceptible for freezing. And so, what ultimately has to happen is, well, we would have to lower that water service and/or insulate it. The other thing to consider is there is a proposed service that would be provided to the parcel immediately south of Mr. Johnson's parcel, that's an undeveloped parcel. And so, in order to get the water across the street, there's a lot of rock in this area, so we would propose to use the same trench that Mr. Johnson's water service is in so that we didn't have to do that extra water service and hopefully we can directional drill underneath Minnesota Avenue. But once we get to the boulevard, then we have to essentially turn the service, extend it to the south around the retaining wall. Mind you, this is all seven feet deep. And, and then run it to that undeveloped parcel. And so, that all becomes more complicated if there's a retaining wall there.
Just let Joe finish, we'll ask a big question.
And so, you know, ideally, we would wait for the utility improvement to be done before the wall goes in. And I would advise you, you know, we could do it as part of the project, but in order to bring a directional drill in and some of the components necessary to construct that water service is gonna be real expensive as compared to what it would cost with a larger project. And so, again, there's a timing thing here, if you want to do this, this year, well, it doesn't line up with the water sewer project very well. If you wanted to wait and do it next year, well, we could, you know, we could, within the contract, put a priority on that water service and that could be, you know, one of the earlier things that they did in 2022. And then, you can follow that up with the construction of the wall. So, you know, a number of timing things here and obviously the city need, you know, if you do choose to move forward with this, it's not a cheap project and I fully understand that, you know, city's budget and there's a process to kind of go through and, and typically things can't get done overnight, but those are kind of the two of the obstacles that I see or that you should consider as you consider this project, whether you want to move forward or not, and if you choose to move forward, what's the timing look like for the city and, and some of the relating, relating improvements?
I have one more question. Did we, I know I'm, you know, I've only been here a few months, so I haven't been a part of all the discussions. But was there ever, did we ever talk about just regrading that property or would that not be, would that not work because of the building that's already there?
The right of way now, the grading is up to the right of way. So, we can't really grade anything more than what it is. They can't get, it won't be any flatter. Because the start point is the same, if you look on the drawings where
Yeah, if you look at the, there's typical sec- or cross-sections in here too, but the typical section does a nice job of that on that first large sheet that you have on your paper. And so, if you look at, I don't know if you can pick out the concrete curb and gutter on your sheet. And if you follow that dash line that goes through the top of the back, top back of the concrete curb, well, that's the existing, that's the existing profile or ground surface. And so, you can also see where the existing right of way is. And so, if you draw a straight line from the top of curb to that existing right of way, you can see that, you know, you can improve the slope a little bit, not a lot.
I just was wondering if there was a way to get Mr. Thompson some help with that slope while we, you know, while we're waiting for the wall to be more important, when it makes sense, you know, to put it in.
Yeah. You know, I guess, one of the things that could be done is, don't maintain the slope. That's what really was intended when the low-maintenance grass was replaced there. Now, those species have been mowed and are largely gone because they don't survive by cutting them all the time.
Communications with Mr. Johnson, he's, he wants to maintain his property, he takes pride in his property, he doesn't want, you know, overgrowth. And it sounds like that's the same with the VFW as well. So, and, and like you said, if those species were there, they're not anymore. And so, that's, we're just kind of in a tight spot because I understand him, I understand him wanting to maintain his property and have it look, look presentable. Also, that it's very difficult to do. So, I just am trying to figure out, the best way to approach is to help him out while we while we try to get this project done.
So, I've got a question for you too. So, for the, for the water and sewer, even if the wall is there, can't we just, can't we just tunnel under it?
It's gonna be rough whether the wall's there or not, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be digging rock no matter what.
Right, so, you typically don't drift and drill through rock. We would open it and we would hammer and blast that rock out.
And, and do we know?
So, if we're adjacent immediately, you know, if there's an obstruction right next to where we're trying to do that, well, puts that wall at risk and it makes it a whole lot harder. You know, can it be done? Sure, you can do any, you know, they can do anything, but it will be expensive and it'll be difficult and obviously, it'll, there'll be risks associated with it.
Jan has a comment. I put, the city run, when I built my lot, built my building, the city had the curb of the water, had no, they had it in the backside of, of the bank, turned the wrong way. The contractors who put the water service in from our property did excavating the rock, they shoved it up there. And so, to answer your question, which is not, when I dug down, my, my curb stop, I put, I put it in, I put it in with clay, clay put it in for me. Is that, is three feet off, three feet into the right of way on the hillside, it's way up on my hill. That's where I dug straight down to hook up through rock to hook up to my curb. The city or the people that put water didn't care how I got to my water main and how much it cost me to hook up to the water main because they made me shut my well down. I had a well, I could have been using my well, they said you can't do that, you have to shut the well down, you have to hook the city water. They didn't care, the city didn't care how I got to it. So, when you say you lay the wall down here on the, on the level like this, my, my water main line is way up the hill and way down. Now, I bored from the back of my building, my water comes in the back of my building, I bored through the rock. I hired the bore guy to come up and he, in three hours, he had the line shoved through the rock so I could hook up to the curb. Now, how do you insulate the rock? I was very concerned about my water pipe not freezing out there. I buried five layers of two-inch pink styrofoam. Because if you know anything about styrofoam, when the frost hits the styrofoam, the frost drives out to the side and drives down. So, it stayed off my water line. So, if you ever don't want frost, you put the styrofoam down and the frost goes on top, it hits the styrofoam and can't go any farther down and drives off to the right or the left and goes down. So, way down deep that I dug down and I hooked that up, you can't hit my wire and when you put that wall down on the lower level and just level off that lower level there, you're not exposing any of my pipe or any of that water line, Joe, as what you said. I know because I put it in, I mean, I dug down and I just took a jackhammer and whatever it took for me to get down to my pipe to do that. And then I filled it all back in with bit-run sand, so I didn't fill the rock back in and then I did the styrofoam. The second thing is, I'd like the council to think about this, I thought about, I wanted to, I, I talked to the mayor here on, on, on Friday. When I was talking to you about building the wall and having the semis bring the rock and the stone down, I didn't want the cement truck coming, there's many, there's big stone, but they're hollow inside because I didn't want to transport cement from way up there down here because I could put a gravel truck on the road and I can fill the hollow core of the big block with rock, gravel from here, much cheaper than me just load semis up because a semi can only take five, six, seven of those big blocks if they're solid. But when they're hollow and taller, you get more block and it's cheaper. The second thing is, your smaller block has spalling issues. The face pops off. Those small, you, you take a look, you take a look at your block buildings, you see the spalling, you see all the faces. Eventually, three, four, eight years down the road, the face starts falling off as the frost gets in it. It cracks the face off the block. Where your big stone, your big cement stone and everything else, the rebar in it and everything else that they got going, you don't get the spalling. Now, architecturally, I wanted it in front because I wanted to make Orin Oakle look nice, my property in front of my property look nice and I wanted to have a nice looking stone. So, you look at, you're just looking at a block, but you're actually looking at a nice stone. I'm more than happy to take the earth out, I'm staining, all I gotta do is stain it. And that's maintainable, if it starts to wear down, you can restain it, you cannot do that with a cut block.
One of my questions as far as maintenance and how
If you go by St. Mary's, those blocks have been, they've been up there. And there's also a different block, now, I don't know in your plan, I don't know that the six-foot wall has to be there, that tall. I'm asking the city to put something in that I can mow. I can't mow this, but I can mow this. So, I don't know, Joe, I, I, I don't know what, how you thought that, but I don't know if, if you put a four-foot wall up and, and we can get the grade and the slope there that you can mow it and stand up and mow it, you don't have to go as high.
Well, then, would you, if you didn't go as high, would you need the fence?
Well, if you go down to four feet, you probably don't need the fence. And that's why, when I was originally talking to you folks about taking the right of way away, if I moved in six foot onto the hillside, I'm already up on the hillside, I'm three foot up taller and that eliminated one of the block going down the whole distance because I'm already up at that height to do that. But you guys want a sidewalk and I understand that, why, what the purpose that is, so now you have to add one more three-foot block in there to do that. But aesthetically, is what you look and what's going to get you the years of service out of that, I'm gonna be dead and long gone. But to get the service out of that wall for Orin Oakle, I highly encourage you folks to go with the, the bigger block, it doesn't move. And again, the hollowness, because I, I researched all this stuff and they're, they make them hollow so that you can put the gravel inside and then you put all your, the, the stone up there is not gonna move. That hillside, the hydraulics on that hill is not gonna move anything.
Thank you, let's, I just have some more questions for Joe then.
So, just the water thing is, I wanna say is, it's way up on the hill, I had to dig all the way down below the street level to get my hookup. And they did boring and I bored from the back of my building all the way there, that cost me $2,500 to run that pipe to that distance. And he went right through the rock and it cost me more money because he said it was going through rock. And nobody said, hey, Jan, I'm sorry you're going through rock and the expense the city said I had to hook up. There's a lot of rock in Orin Oakle. You were gonna find that with a sewer.
So, Joe, I guess my question is, the first off, I don't love the fence, that was the first thing I thought of when I saw that.
So, tip- typically, anything over, I think it's 42 inches should be fenced. It's a liability thing, it's a public safety thing.
I understand the need for it, I just don't like it.
Right, you look at the pictures, even the Ryland provided, they're both, they're both high walls. Couple of things on block quality. Spalling is an issue as it relates to block and freeze-thaw issues. And another issue that eats up wall is salt, you know, there's salt splash, people plow, it's thrown up against the wall, salt eats up concrete, right? So, there's ways to mitigate that. Cheap block, before there was a standard and air entrainment and, and block walls and, and standards put out there for concrete quality, a lot of walls fell apart. And so, you know, Minnott has standards for retaining walls and block. And not all manufacturers meet those. Whether you use the big block wall or the small block wall, they're made of concrete, right? Concrete is susceptible to spalling. Concrete's susceptible to damage from salt and freeze-thaw cycles. And so, you can have issues with both. You can treat both. There's ways to seal walls. But I guess the number one thing is buying a quality block that has an air entrainment and, and meets the current standards so that we prevent that, so we don't have a wall that's quality.
So, to go off of what Dana was saying, yeah, I'm trying to pass through, and Jan was saying, is there a way to make the wall half the height and grade down to the top of the wall so that
Sure, you, you know, you, you can see that we used a four-to-one slope from the right of way down to the top of the wall, that's what the typical section shows. Now, one of the issues is we want to maintain a bald wall, that's a wall that a 25% grade. And so, again, four feet horizontal, one feet vertical, that's a four-to-one slope. If we want to go to a three-to-one slope, would that reduce the wall slightly? Yeah, probably would reduce the wall, maybe up to two feet. But it's a lot steeper. And you're also, bottom of the three-to-one slope is a fence, you know, so, is there a risk there? Sure, there is. Can it be mitigated or can it, you know, could it be fine? Sure, it is. But one of the reasons we're doing the project is to have a maintainable slope that's not problematic moving forward. And so,
No, I agree with that, I'm just curious, like in the, the 150 feet north along the west side of Minnesota Avenue where you're talking about grading, you were talking about, you know, that would be two and a half, three and a half, what did you say?
Two and a half.
Two and a half to one?
Yes, the slope.
The slope would be, so, but the other areas would be?
Four to one.
Four to one. So, why not maintain that three, I mean, three to one, two and a half to one? If you're saying two and a half to one is doable.
So, we picked two and a half to one, so it would tie with, tie into the right of way line. And I'm saying that it's steep, it's a lot better than it is today, but it's not ideal. Okay, so, if we're gonna spend the money on a retaining wall, we're gonna create a scenario that is maintainable, I, you know, it isn't a problem. And so, that was our thought process. Now, can we put a steeper slope behind that? Yeah, are you gonna be happy with it? Maybe, maybe not.
Can you talk to me about the construction limits, the existing wall and steps, that's in front of the VFW?
Yeah, so, there was or has been some discussion from the VFW over the years that the steps would be removed and be, be removed by the VFW, so they're not even included. They, they don't, I don't believe, use those steps.
They're chained up, they're very steep and
So, I, I think there, it's just assumed that they would be removed and the wall would
At one time, Jason Ottman's agreed to remove them. So, they had talked to Jason previous years when they had been used, so. Still have agreement still there for him to do that.
And another thing to consider is, so, there's rock in the slope, right? And the rock is weathered. And so, as you you have a combination of, you know, the first few feet is, is probably gonna be weathered rock. And is that diggable? With certain types of equipment, sure it is. But as you go down and you get deeper into the bedrock, the rock gets harder and harder and harder. And is that diggable with most excavators? It's not. And so, then you start to hammer it out or blast it.
I have a new kid question, why are we doing this in the first place?
We'll have to have coffee with Jan. It's a long story.
Some three years, it's all down the hill like I've done.
I see.
We've already heard all my story, you'd be here saying, let's get it done.
Alrighty.
They moved, just for you, they moved the road for the slope, they moved the road over five feet. The road used to be up five feet, so if you take that slope five feet out that way, you have a maintainable slope. But once they put the white and the curb and everything else and moved the slope over, you did that.
There's a lot of council packets that we can get you that explain, he's done a nice job of putting together the information.
Is there a reason why you didn't hook up, you said there was a lot when they put it in, on Herb's property? Is there a reason why you didn't put a curb stop on Herb's property? Wouldn't it have been cheaper to put the curb stop, you talked about you want to add a curb stop for the water in that lot? Was there a reason why the city, when they put mine in and they put the line down to the next lot, they just didn't go down there and the hole was open? And put a curb stop there and say, here's your water main?
Yeah, the council at that time, it's my understanding, the council at that time
Yeah, the, the council at that time, it's my understanding, the council at that time decided not to run water to undeveloped lots.
That's right, that was the policy.
That's ten feet.
Well, there's also a standard that we, you know, you, you don't run two services off of one pipe. So they would be separate services, just like now. But there was a policy in place in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that they chose not to serve undeveloped lots. We talked about that in sewer and water and with the council. Moving forward, whether we wanted to perpetuate that policy or not, the decision was no, for a number of good reasons. Um, and, and so, you know, that's the scenario that we have today.
So what are we gonna do?
Well, that's the challenge, that's the question, and, um, the funding for it is, we have funds available in the capital budget. At the end of the twenty nineteen audit, we had over five hundred thousand dollars in capital improvements. Last year, we had a hundred and ninety-five thousand in capital projects, and I think we only used, uh, five thousand of it. So, um, this year, we have two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, in the capital budget. So we, there are funds, that's why, because we also have the sewer project coming up. We also have to, um, you know, fund some of the things that the public works will need for the sewer department and that type of thing, and so those are all critical issues, but at the same time, I think we're really fortunate to be sitting where we're at, the funds that we do have, so. I think the funds are, if we're gonna do something now, but the challenge is that water line, at the risk of waiting a year, um, there's, there's more funds, we'll, as we start our water project, sewer projects and water improvements in the fall, but mainly in twenty twenty-two, but it's, uh, twenty twenty-three, I think, is when we're gonna have to start looking at additional equipment for the public works department and the wastewater treatment plan, and things outside the bonding bill. So, so.
I guess my feeling is, you know, what, what would we do if there was already a wall there? With, in terms of water and sewer, we would have to deal with it anyway, right? My feeling is, instead of pushing this off another year or two years, I, I would suggest we just get this done and be done with it. Jan's been patient, it, it's been a sore spot, back and forth. I think we've said that we would do it.
My only, my only concern regarding that is the line that parallels, if you look at the drawing, where the line is gonna go to the end of the wall, into Herb's undeveloped mud, parallel with, right in the middle of the sidewalk, we're at the seven-foot area, so. I guess that's the question, any type of, you know, open trenching or a hole to intercept a horizontal drill is still gonna impact the potential for that wall, if we put the wall in place like. Because if you go down six, seven feet.
So the scenario there, you know, essentially, if the wall's there, we probably have to change our philosophy, we probably open cut the street. Cut, open, cut across Minnesota Avenue and, and change that alignment to kind of go diagonally across the street to get to Herb's property and, and avoid impact to the wall, so, you know, what does it cost to cut across, cut across the street there? Well.
You're gonna have to do that in multiple areas anyway, right?
We will, it's just, you know, it's another seven, eight thousand, ten thousand dollars.
But realistically, if we wait another year to do this, this project is gonna go up another seven, eight thousand dollars. It's, I, I think I agree with Jim, and I, I'd like to see this move forward.
And, and the other, the other thing that's kind of unspoken here is, I would hate to see something happen. Because that would be more than the seven, eight thousand dollars that we're looking at. I, I say just get it done, Ryland's put a lot forward here just to get the study done. My feeling is, we just do it, because if there was a wall there, we'd have to deal with it anyway during this city water sewer project.
Would you like to make a motion, Jim?
What's that?
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we, that we just go forward with it.
We have to choose a.
We have to choose a.
Choose one.
Okay, so I'll choose a block.
And then do we also, my ques, sorry, do we, would we also do the grading on?
Well, that's, I'd like to talk about that for a second.
And it's, you know, on that north side as well, or do, what do we, you know, since nobody?
I would like to see, and I, I'm not saying we're flush with money, but I do think it would be, if we're talking about a beautification project, which is kind of what our original goal was.
Right.
If we were to take, instead of a slope on the north side of West Center Street, is to put in a, whatever sized wall it would take to get a one-to-four slope. And build a four-to-five foot wall, and then have it wrap around the corner like it does coming around the VFW. Make it a very aesthetic look, you will. Uh, it, it both, it would complement both walls and, and, uh.
So there is, there, there is sewer going through that area, we'd have to remove and replace part of the wall to, to do the future improvement.
On the north side.
See, the sewer coming down Main Street?
So, yeah, it, it's in the, it's in the North Boulevard of East Center Street.
It's where?
It's in the, in the North Boulevard of East Center Street.
That's the line, is it, that, going across the street?
Yeah.
I see your strength.
So, you know, it wouldn't affect all the wall, but it would affect, you know, all of it.
I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing with our taxpayers' dollars. It, in that, you know, I mean, that worries me that if they saw us put up a wall, and then a year later, we're digging into it or tearing down. From a person's eyes, that's a regular citizen, and that hasn't been privy to Jan's, you know, information, that would make no sense. So I worry about that part of it. Um, especially if there's things that need to be removed, that would make a, I mean, I think that would be.
But it is an undeveloped lot too.
Right. I, I, I don't know, I say just, I like Ryland's idea.
I like it.
I say we just deal with it, honestly. Are we looking at a lot, Joe? So if, if we do Ryland's idea in addition, you know, to make it curvy the corner. You said it doesn't, it won't come in contact with a lot of it, but some of it.
Right.
You have a thumb to the wind, yes.
There's complications there, you're, you're digging a trench, and then you're building a wall over, well. You're talking about building a wall, then removing the wall, then digging a trench, and then rebuilding the wall over the trench, and.
So.
Is that a good idea?
Open here.
There's risk with it, you know, because there's, there's potential for settlement, and while it happens if the wall settles, or the trench settles, the wall, the wall moves a little bit.
Can't you pick the big stone, the, the reason to use a big stone is because you can pick, it's got the, you'd pick a bigger stone up in a bigger area. And they got sheep's foot, that you can, when I built my lot and tore up my house, tore that all out there, I brought the big sheep's foot packer in, and run that over, and I made that engineered soil. So when I built my building, I never had to worry about my floor, I didn't know sinking. So that wall, they've got compacters today, that, that if you took the big stone, Joe, and you had to move it, you can pick two or big stones up and move them, do what you gotta do, and then pack it, and then set the stones back, versus the block where it's more intricate, there's more block, more thing, the big stones ripped up. You do what you gotta do, they've got, they can engineer, they got back, they've got, uh, on the back holes, they got big tamperers on, uh, hydraulic tamperers, they can tamp and make engineered soil. And then it comes up.
So, what would happen if we took the approach of just doing the south wall, leaving the north wall as it is until sewer water is completed, then we come back and finish the north wall?
I like that idea better, I just, I cannot imagine what the citizens would think if we were.
I'd rather not, that'd be important to the taxpayers' money.
Right, I love the idea of both of those walls, and tying it together, and that would be, like, maybe a future project. I just think it, it would look so bad if we're tearing stuff down that we just put up. If it was five years down the road, that would be different, but we're talking one year, you know, and that just wouldn't make any sense.
So that takes some money out of the cost.
Right.
But I know it's the same, I'm sorry, it didn't change at all.
Long as.
No, no, I'm sorry, it would, because we're not gonna do the north wall, so.
And then I would also be more comfortable spending the money to get the bigger rock, I think that looks better. It's aesthetically much more pleasing, um.
If you look at your product, you see a full site, if you bought the block wall on the line, what a savings it would be to do it. I mean, I know what you're saying, but, but look at the cost, it would be cheaper to do it all at once, even though you had to move it, versus going back at it again, and then bringing the crew back and bringing the stone down and doing it again. I don't know, but that's sometimes when you do contracts, it'll come in.
Okay, hold on, um, I just had another thought, who, the person that owns that property now, is there issues with?
It's Mark Martin who owns it, I don't think there's.
He's never been, we haven't heard anything about, from him correctly, correct?
I don't wanna talk to Mark about it, it's just that he does weed whack it every once in a while before gold rush.
Okay.
So if we did, let me just back off, if we did go ahead and grade the door side, no, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense to grade it now and come back and put a wall, because we do, we put dirt back in it, behind the wall.
And I, I appreciate what Jan's saying about, um, you know, buying it, that makes, does make sense. But I still think we have to really think about what our, what the citizens would think if we put up a wall, and then one year later, have to take part of it out. It's, there's more, there's more of the city than just the few of us in this room, so we have to take that into consideration.
I mean, without doing anything on the door side, it looks like a complete project on the south side, and we could add to it, um, in a couple of years when we're all done, so. So if we take the, what is it, fifteen thousand out of that north slope? We're gonna get that figure out.
That's on the bottom, they're three separate things.
Yeah, it's fifteen thousand.
There is, yeah, okay. That's additional.
Right.
I thought we were taking it. So with the, if we decide to use the bigger block, which I kinda sense, you don't like the bigger block than the smaller block, or the? I'm just, I'm trying to read the tea leaves, or what do we think we could do?
I, I would say the bigger block, I mean, look, it's, you go by Saint Mary's, by the parking lot there on Second Street, that's all that big block, the parking lot rests on the big block.
Now, the opposite of that, if we use the small block, we could match, we could match, or come close to matching the block that's in from Jan's building too.
Well, I thought about that too, now you're gonna have two different looks, so that's tricky.
Well, the reason I put the smaller block up there is because the bigger will, I had put the bigger block, but I couldn't make the turn. The tree's gone now, I took the tree out because it died, so I took the tree out, if that tree would have been there, I could have done the bigger block, but at the time, I was trying to save the tree. Versus when I should have just said.
Yeah.
But, but the, for the, for the street look and what you want to walk by, that, they've got different cut stones that look really, really nice. That would really be aesthetically to downtown Orange Oak and what you're trying to do.
With the small block or the?
No, they.
The big block, it's a, it doesn't make a difference what I have up on mine, it's.
Oh, I thought we were, right.
Yeah, no, but they're a lot, I said you could get a different stone, you got different looks that you can get in that stone, and it's very, very nice looking.
Well, and if there's truly stained, you can stain them similar color, I, we can, yeah, we can talk about that another time, but I like the big block as well, I don't know.
So we just need to make a motion.
I mean, the fifteen, the ten percent contingency, that's ten thousand dollars, then we could, the contract could come in less than the hundred and twenty-three too, so we're, that's a contingency for your contract. I make a motion that we proceed to use the pick block design the south portion of, uh, south of West Center Street. And not do anything on the door side. Wait a second. Is there anything else we need to add in the motion, Joe? About the water line, I guess, uh, ask you to.
Well, we're gonna have to.
Instead of moving the line.
Yeah, um, the, the water line to the vacant lot's part of the other project, so we'll move that, and we'll show the street, street excavations and.
It's just gonna be a wider excavation, or?
Well, there wasn't any excavation before, it's.
Maybe it still doesn't have to be, we don't know.
I think it does, yeah, I mean, I, practically, that's, it has, it has to happen if the wall's gonna be there, so.
Okay, well, if you could.
I guess.
Give us a serious thought, I think that would just.
Yeah, I, I assume you wanna authorize us to put the plans and specs together.
I'm sorry.
For the wall?
I'm assuming that's what you're telling me to do, is put the plans and specs together, and we'll try to bid this in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the motion for, for to get it, your expect and go off for quotes.
Do we have a date that we wanna target to have it completed?
That would probably come in here.
Come back with the quotes, I guess.
Yeah, well, we'll have to publicly bid this because.
I don't think you have.
Well, it's quite, yeah, it's, it's just, just under five hundred seventy-five thousand, so, yeah.
You could though, you could bid it if you wanted to, to try to get a better price, but it's not required. And you can solicit quotes, I don't know your experience with soliciting quotes for something like this, probably equal to bidding.
Yeah.
Would you mind explaining that to the new members, that fresh over?
Yeah, so there, there's the municipal contracting law, so cities can't buy or can't enter into contracts of less than a hundred and seventy-five thousand without competitively bidding it, and that's a process that's defined in statute, but it basically means you bring in sealed bids, they're closed, they're open in a public, in a public setting, so that it's all transparent, government transparency. And then you're required to take either the lowest responsible bidder or the best value alternative. The lowest responsible bidder is the lowest price, assuming they are responsible, if they're not responsible, well, they don't respond to the bids, the specs that he's gonna create. For example, if they come in and say, the other wall that you didn't spec out, you can call them not responsible because they didn't, they didn't respond to it. Best value alternative, you're not gonna use that here if you bid this, but that's sometimes used with larger projects where, you know, we're doing that in, in another city, I'm doing, you know, to help right now, but that's where you don't take the lowest price, but you set criteria of what would make the best, the best value to the city, which might not necessarily be the lowest price, depending on other factors, and you do a factor weighting scale, it's in statute, it's complicated. Um, so that's competitive bidding, now, it only applies to certain contracts, I did that in quotes for a reason, that's defined. So it's only applied, that whole law only applies to the purchase of goods or services or contracts for service, uh, contracts for construction. It does not apply to contracts for services, such as my contract and Joe's contract, and other professional services contracts. So, um, because you're purchasing, you, you're gonna hire a company that's gonna assume the quotes will request them to bid the, you know, bid all the materials and the construction, so that the company you hire will provide that. Um, it would qualify under the type of contract, but because it's not over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, you don't have to do that public opening of bids. Sometimes cities choose to do it voluntarily, um, if you choose to do it voluntarily, that's fine, you can do it. You just have to follow all the statutory rules, you can't just follow some of the rules. Once you avail yourself of that process, you gotta do the whole process. So quotes are easier, because you don't have to mess around with that, so, that's, that's a really broad overview.
So from my, my perspective, we'll do pretty much the same work, the only work that, the work that we don't have to do, if we get quotes versus a public bid, is we don't have to advertise in the paper, so you don't have the publication costs and some of those formalities. Um, and we, you know, we, we still have a bid opening, it's just a, a little less formal. And, uh, so, it is a little bit cheaper way to go, you know, frankly, I'm gonna send it to everybody that I would expect to bid it, that I think is qualified and capable, and, uh, we've had good luck, you know, we do a lot of homework here.
Yeah, so the biggest difference, though, is that you don't have, if you do quotes, you don't have to take the lowest responsible bidder. So once you do that bidding process, you are locked into taking whoever the lowest one is. And for example, if you get a company that's somebody, you know, some people yell out from the back in Orenoco council meetings. Somebody yells out, they're terrible. They screwed up my project. But they're the lowest bidder? You got to take them. They're the lowest bidder. You can try to claim they're not responsible. You can get sued if you do that. So, so that's why if you do quotes, you have, you know, if you got three that are all kind of the same, like within a few thousand dollars and they're you know, the one that was $1,000 less, you wouldn't have to take that one. You could take the one that was just barely, barely more if you thought they, they could do the job better for whatever reason.
So then what do we need to do to make a motion to go forward with all of this?
I guess the other thing to do is, you know, we talked about it in the feasibility report, is make, make sure you guys don't, you have a, nobody's mess, mentioned assessment. That kind of changes the game too. You guys are going to pay for this as a city cost, period. And that'd be no assessment to benefiting property owners, because if there is, then that, that changes the game again.
When I, I, I'm sorry.
What if we construct a wall now, then next season we bring in a bunch of this machinery to put the water in? And then we have to redo parts of the wall. Well, that, that would incur charge, like a cost on the assessed cost for a water project.
So no, we, what we're talking about is just constructing the south portion of the wall.
Okay.
And we would reconfigure the utility improvements to avoid impacts to the wall. There's additional cost to that, but.
To me, assessing the individuals, especially since one is the VFW, not that I don't think Jan should have to pay for it. But I, you know, the VFW, I think that I would have a hard time assessing.
We have a policy. It doesn't cover walls. It frankly is kind of a gray area. But again, it's not my decision. It's, it's your guys' decision.
So the other thing to think about that is, moving forward, if we choose not to assess, then we have to stick with that in the future. For beautification. Possibly. I just, possibly. I mean, I just think that's something to consider and, and, and just make sure that we all agree that that's the precedent we set.
If we put in the motion to use capital improvement fund, just to pay for the project, which I'll make a friendly amendment to my motion that we do the south portion and we pay for it by capital improvement funds. That takes the assessment off the table.
Right. And there's no.
It's a city sponsored project. All the citizens will benefit from it. That's why we have capital projects. And we're in a position now, the city's in a position where we can afford to do that.
And if, and if we're looking, because I think one of the biggest reasons we're constructing the wall instead of saying, Jan, you can do it, is because of future use in sidewalks and things like that. So that's another reason that this would be different than just on personal property.
Well, it's all right away, so.
It is, it is, but.
It's not like a street improvement.
Someone else asked us to come and improve there right away. Where are we going to say?
So that's dealt with, you know, there's two ways it's dealt with. One is what you're doing here. And then you could just assess it if you wanted to. If this was a street improvement, you'd be assessing that, so, right? I mean.
Typically, yes.
Okay, so you know, if somebody wants to come in and say they want to build a, what if they just said, we're going to pay for it, we just want to build the wall? And it's in your part, partly in your right of way, you would give them a license agreement to do that, which is not like an easement. It's more like a, a contract where they can place something in our public right of way by consent. And the agreement would just say that in the event the city needs to access their right of way for things like the water, the sewer pipes and sidewalks or whatever, that we could take the wall out if we needed to. And they, people do that sometimes because of the very unlikely scenario in which the city would actually do that, you know? And so that's, that's the other way it's dealt with. So it's either like a, you know, a right of way permit is sometimes what it's called. You know, you should have a right of way ordinance, which I think you do. It allows people to get permits to construct things in the public right of way. And a license agreement is a more formal way to do that, which you would do with something more expensive, such as retaining wall. But it sounds like you're just going to pay for it.
All right. So we have a clear understanding of the motion?
So do you need to make the motion, pay for it in capital?
He amended, he made a.
We're good.
Okay, good, good, good.
Any other comments?
If we, I have one more question for you. I'm sorry. The, if we wait. So the issue is if we wait to do it till after the water is coming through, there's time, certainly, and, and you know, the implication of a person, but then there's also the potential that there could be appreciation in this current, like the costs that you currently outlined here. Okay. That is clear.
Thanks.
Let's see your phone. I like you.
Favor of going for it, significantly saying aye. Approved, so we'll move that along, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. Last item, consent agenda.
Does a sewer, does a sewer, where does a sewer come down from my property? Is that coming down?
It's on here on the map, someplace.
I was just kind of curious. Is it coming down the Main Street, does it?
Certainly, your property would be along the alley on the west side.
Okay, alley on the west side, so I don't have to worry about boring all that direction.
Can I motion for consent agenda?
Second.
Full in favor, significantly saying aye. Motion to adjourn.
Yours and hers.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I thought Ryan made it.
All right, all those in favor, significantly saying aye. Lizzie, this is not a normal. I hope we don't have any more $3 hours of 15 minutes. Typically, a couple hours of.